Accepting the minutes. That's five.
Is that right?
Yeah. Um, the next motion to accept and approve the minutes of August 18th, 2015, as shown. A second for that.
Second.
Tim?
Oh.
Oh, Terrence?
Sure.
All right. Any comments on those minutes of August 18th? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of August 18th? Another five. And then to motion to accept and approve the minutes of August 20th, 2015, as shown. Do we have a second for those minutes?
Second.
Okay. Any comment on the minutes of August 20th? All those in favor of accepting the minutes of August 20th? Five. Okay. Item three. Move to accept and approve the list of correspondences as shown, items A through I. Second for that.
Second.
Timothy. Any comments on the correspondence, items A through I, for this week?
Yeah, 'cause I have one.
Okay.
I'm gonna peek off of David's agenda here, but item five, or I'm sorry, item D, Hudson Downtown Repaving Schedule. Curious why that was included in our correspondence.
It was information that came from the chamber, so we added it.
Okay.
It's kinda funny. I read that one myself, and the first time I read it, I understood it, and the second time, I breezed through, and I said, "Where is the rotary? We don't have a rotary in town." So, all right. Any more comments on those correspondence items? Okay. Um, all those in favor of accepting and approving the correspondence, A through I? Five. Okay. So the item four is a rail trail easement amendment. Are we reading the whole thing?
No, just the small part in the agenda report, sir.
Okay.
Just the motion. So, Mr. Chair, just a quick overview. This is an amendment for the Wedgwood Realty Trust property. It's an amendment to what was initially the easement from about, approximately about seven years ago. The final plan, design changed. The prior easement had a very site-specific location with the final design plan that changed, of course, over the last seven or eight years. That's the need, so that the actual easement matches the plan.
Okay. Okay, so, the motion is an amendment to an easement agreement. I hereby move to accept the amendment to the easement from Wedgwood Realty Trust for the public rail trail, which reflects the substitution of a new plan showing an increase in square footage, and that was recorded August 25th, 2015, in the Middlesex Registry of Deeds.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, any comments? All those in favor of accepting easement? Five. Mr. Goss. Motion to accept and approve the appointment of William Goss to a full member of the planning board to fill Kevin Calzio's term, which expires on June 30th, 2018. So everyone recalls that within the last month, we appointed Mr. Goss as the alternate to the planning board, and now we're gonna appoint him possibly as a full position, so...
I'll second that.
Any seconds? Okay. David seconded. Any comments? Okay. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Goss to the full member of the planning board to fill Kevin Calzio's term, expiring June 30th, 2018? Five to zero. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
You've been sworn in like four times now.
You have to be reached for one of us.
New position.
New term, new position. He's getting to go to town clerk. Okay. It's on hiatus. Okay, that's good. Pena? We have before us a motion to accept and approve a request for a special one-day permanent at Memorial Park, Halfway Cafe, to have a cornhole tournament, Sunday, September 20th, 2015. Do we have a second? Okay. Before we get to our questions and comments, wanna just tell us what you wanna do there, please?
Um, we're just doing a cornhole tournament, somewhere between 20 to 40 people. So, you know, 10 to 20 teams, just to get people in on a Sunday, watch the Patriots game, and then after do a cornhole tournament. That's pretty much about it.
Okay. What time do you have it as?
Uh, we wanna do it between 4:00 and 8:00.
Okay. So, the, this original request has the time from noon to 5:00?
We're getting noon to 5:00 until we realize, I thought the Patriots had it by that week, but they do not. They're actually playing.
Okay, so we're talking 4:00 to 8:00?
4:00 to 8:00. 4:00 to 7:00, 4:00 to 8:00, depending on how long it takes and how many teams we have.
Okay. All right. All right. I have a couple of questions myself.
Sure.
Who is gonna supervise that area during the time of the event?
I will be there.
Okay. Um, I guess, I guess I could probably speak further. One of the concerns of this group that will probably most likely be alcohol, um, after a Patriots game, and then, you know, for three or four hours afterwards. What are we gonna do to prevent people from walking from your establishment through the parking lot to Memorial Park with alcohol? How are we gonna stop that, and...
It's just, it's a non-alcoholic event, so no one can leave, as our liquor license states, no one can leave the property with liquor, so it's as any other day, any other business day.
So there's no alcohol?
There's no alcohol.
That's not part of the primary process, it's just, uh... The alcohol is withdrawn. Okay. Okay. Um, I guess the only other question I have is, is this a charitable function, or is this just a, something to do for the day, or...
It's just something to do for the day, to get people in. All the money that we do raise will go back to, you know, sponsorship of the cornholes and other things, waters, stuff like that, that we will have out there, just non-alcoholic waters, soda.
Money-making event.
Ish.
Ish.
Yeah. We're not, we're not trying to make, you know, we're just trying to get people in the door.
I don't wake up in the morning and go to work to lose money, so I'm assuming if it's not a charitable event, it's a money-making event. Okay, so, all right, those are my questions. Does anybody else have any questions for me?
Yeah. First question is, is this, this is, I thought it was, first I thought the alcohol, I was not, not in favor of that, over that, that location. The second question I have, then I thought it was employees-only to celebrate five-year anniversary or something, but that's not the case, this is open to the public?
This is open to the public.
Okay. Thirdly, any idea what time the sun goes down on September 20th?
Don't.
Would you have lighting over there after, I mean, it's 7:00 o'clock now?
Yeah, I mean, it's 7:15 now, and so, when it gets dark, we'd stop, we wouldn't keep playing.
Well, I spike. Okay.
Um, my, my only other issue is, you know, traditionally, Memorial Park is used for community events. It's a place of reverence for the community, as I'm sure you understand, and I have a little bit of a problem with having sort of, you know, that type of a party atmosphere out there. I'm interested in hearing what the others have to say. Cornhole, just so, if I understand, it's the game with the, with the beanbags and you toss it into a hole, and...
Absolutely.
And you're expecting how many people?
It's, I have no idea, I'm just ballparking somewhere between 20 to 40 people.
Okay.
It could be 10. I don't know.
Gotcha. All right. I'll hear the other questions, if there are any.
I don't have any problem with it. I feel halfway is part of the community, it's community grounds, I don't see why they should be, you know, I'm assuming that most of the folks that go to, that go to the establishment are gonna be from the local area anyways, probably mostly from Maynard, I'm hoping. So I wouldn't have a problem with that, I just, as long as the care is taken for making sure they respect the space, and the one issue I do have is traffic right next to that. Have we talked to the chief and the police about how we're gonna handle safety from the road that's running between, you know, some street, between the fine arts and that? I can envision people backing up towards the road and getting a little crazy with some of the cars coming down there, especially as it gets dark. So I just wonder if we've, if we've had any discussion with the police department about safety issues, or...
I haven't had any discussions with the police department yet, no. But I'm more than happy to discuss that with the police.
From a safety perspective, that's the one thing I... A bunch of people congregating around the edge of the perimeter there, stepping back into traffic by accident. I'm assuming that some of them will already have imbibed a little bit during the Patriots game, you know, and they may be coming out to...
We can set, you know, we can set up the cornholes closer to the other side, closer to the parking lot side as opposed to the street side, so it's not so close to the street, if that's a concern.
I don't know, Chief, do you have any standing protocol for how you deal with an event like that?
First time.
First time.
I'm a trendsetter, what can I say?
That's okay, I mean, I like that, too. That's really the only question I have about it, is just making sure it's, it's safe for me if I don't move.
Chief, we're held liable, so...
Excuse me. Uh, Chief, would you think it would be wise to consider having a patrol officer there, or an officer there on, you know, a detail?
To be very helpful, there's gonna be a lot of traffic going between halfway and in the, you know, field, park, you know, that could be an issue just with the parking lot, and then, depending on how many people are there, you know, my biggest concern is that they're gonna leave halfway with alcohol going out the park, you know. There's no, I don't know what the control is for that.
That was my concern when I thought it was gonna be an alcohol event to begin with, so...
It could be the case for any day that someone leaves your establishment, though, right? You're liable for that.
Yeah, it's, we're liable for it, so no one can leave the property as always with liquor. We can't have anything outside, you know, it has to be, if it's consumed and bought on property, it has to stay in the building. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be any change going into that on that Sunday, it'd be the same business as usual on that day.
Tim, any questions?
Oh, that's definitely different. Haven't seen anything, I haven't seen that park use it for anything other than bands and community gatherings, so I consider this a community event, it's open to the public. I was curious, have you generated interest already in it?
Uh, I have six people that wanna play, so, three teams, as of right now.
I mean, to address the safety concerns, I would suggest maybe bumping it up an hour, 4:00 to 7:00, maybe 3:30, if you wanna cut the paths a little short. Other than that, I haven't any issue with it now that there's no liquor involved, and I, I'm confident that you can handle keeping the liquor inside the establishment, you guys got a good reputation as it is.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Jason?
Um, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Um, what's the, obviously no alcohol, food, are you just gonna police the area at the end, clean up?
Absolutely. We have staff that are gonna be there with me, patrolling that area as well.
Okay, so staff will maintain the, the park at the end of the event?
Yes.
Can you confirm, will there be food over there?
There will not be food.
No.
I, we're not serving food there, no.
They're not obligated to keep people from leaving with food, though, so...
Gotcha.
Um, other than that, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Any public comments or concerns? No? Okay, so, all those in favor of approving this best request for a one-day permanent at Memorial Park for Halfway Cafe to host a cornhole tournament, Sunday, September 20th, 2015, between 4:00 and approximately 8:00 p.m.? All in favor?
Mr. Chair, before we vote, can we put as a condition that they get a detail, based on the chief's, is that something that the board believes we should have, or...
Well, I would... I mean, it probably would, I mean, I don't know, Chief, for their, not speaking for these guys, it might be cost prohibitive if they have six players, but...
Well, they may cancel if it's six, I don't know.
Let's just assume that, um...
I'll agree upon a number, like if we have 30 people or something, we can get a detail, right? I don't think it was 20.
Well, we probably wanna decide, the chief wants to decide the number, I would think, and perhaps, I would suggest that, you know, you, you discuss it with the chief, and then, you know, you guys come to an agreement, and if you guys come to an agreement, and everyone's okay up before the 20th, that we, that it's okay. I don't know that we can put it, you know, change it now and put it in as a requirement, but certainly, I would think that, you know, Jose and Chief Dubois can figure it out and get it done.
Absolutely.
Is that okay?
Yeah. I actually think we can make it a requirement at this point, but that's, you know...
Can, yeah.
Yeah.
Can make it a condition.
Right.
I don't know, does anyone else would like to make it a condition, or would like to have him just work it out with the chief? Whatever anyone wants to do is okay.
My second would be working it out with the chief. Let's see what they...
We're gonna leave it up to you and Chief Dubois, unless anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know why 40 people in the park would necessitate a police detail. I, do we, you know, if you need a police detail for a community band, 'cause you get excited, start dancing, and walk into traffic, I...
No, the difference is, the difference is because the preview, the preview to the cornhole tournament is the Patriots at a liquor establishment, and the people are coming over from there, so the assumption is, perhaps a poor assumption, but the assumption is that some people will have been drinking.
Wouldn't say it's an assumption, it's pretty, pretty, pretty much a done thing, but, I don't know, I think that we can allow Jose to wanna work it out with the chief, if everyone's okay with that, in general, so, trust that'll happen.
It will.
If not, we know where you are.
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay. So, I guess if we wanna vote, anybody, all those in favor of granting the one-day permit? Five. Good luck with the cornhole tournament.
Thank you very much.
One question, what's the fee? We wanna publicize it on TV, and a bunch of people watching.
$25.
All right.
13.
13? There you go.
Thank you, John.
Excellent.
Okay.
Your permit will be ready tomorrow.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda was a request from the Knights of Columbus for a haunted house, that has been withdrawn by the Knights of Columbus, and we'll be back next year. The eighth item on the agenda? Kenny, front row, baby. You can sit up here, come on.
Okay, I'm ready.
We're gonna quiz you, all right? So, we have before us...
You said China Ruby, yeah?
Okay, let me just read this, and then we'll get to that. So we have before us a motion to accept and approve a request for two 15-minute parking spots on Nason Street for the China Ruby, and we're gonna hear from Mr. Kenny Wong, and, okay, Kenny, tell us what you want.
So, we already set a 15-minute parking for pickup, for food pickup, and get a spot reserved, so we could, we have a lot of takeout order, and people will be looking around the parking space, be double parked on the street, maybe stop in the shop, or park in the corner, on the handicap, that's not a good idea. So we need a fun spot for the pickup people, about 15 minutes to pick up and leave, if it's possible, yeah.
Okay. You, all right, so, all right, does anybody else have any questions for...
Yeah.
At this point?
If I may.
You may.
Um, good evening. Back in 2008, I was a member of the Board of Selectmen at that point, and we actually implemented the whole policy of temporary spaces downtown, and for the board, I gave each of you a copy of the, the policy that we implemented at that point, and to my knowledge, the policy has never changed. Basically, the, the, there was a subcommittee of the board that got together and created a, a policy that was voted on and approved by the Board of Selectmen relative to these, to these spaces, and we then had a debate and negotiated and determined where those particular, the first five or seven, I think it was five, would be placed downtown, and they were strategically placed at various locations. One of which, I believe you know, is right in front of the paper store, which is less than probably 100 yards from your front door, is one of the spots for the 15-minute parking. So there's already one there, and you're here tonight with a request for two. Secondly, at the time, one of the portions of the policy, I'll read it to you, it says, requests for, what we referred to them as red meters at the time, because we planned on putting actually red meters at the location as opposed to having just a sign there, but we never went there due to expenses and other issues, but, "Request for red meter spaces on the core street blocks of Nason Street and Main Street, east of Nason Street, should be made by multiple business owners, landowners, or downtown residents. It is recommended that all requests for those locations must be submitted by at least three unrelated persons or businesses that may be affected by the requested red meter." The reason that was put in there, sir, is because not all of the other businesses in your area want those spaces to be 15-minute parking. For example, the gentleman that, that runs the, the 24-hour exercise workout place, he was really disappointed and upset when we had to tear down the upper deck of the garage because his customers park up there.
Right, yeah.
So have you spoken to any of the other business owners, and are any of the other business owners desirous of having this 15-minute parking taking up some of their parking for some of their customers? I'm sure also, Porfino's the barber, probably doesn't want to have spaces that are limited as it is to be taken up, and as you may be aware, as time goes on, we're gonna be losing additional spaces downtown due to the implementation of the rail trail, so, my point in commenting for the board's identification was just to let all of us know that there is a policy, and the policy is that any time a request is made for an additional space downtown, under the current policy, of course, any board can change the policy, and it could be changed tonight if the policy, if the board so desires, is that multiple businesses or individuals request a particular location. So given the fact that the current policy prohibits one individual or business coming before the board and asking for a spot, I can't be in favor of your request.
So how about this, one, one spot that's in front of our building? Be near a spot, one, it's not two spot, one spot in a...
But the point is, as I just said, to even request one spot requires multiple businesses or individuals to come forward with the request, and I remind you, there is already a spot about 100 feet from your front door.
Well, it's funny you say that, David, because when I looked at that for many years, I thought it was just for the paper store, it's gonna be expected to be, you know, hey, outside the China Ruby or whatnot. It's great that he mentions one spot compromised, 'cause I was gonna suggest maybe we look at one spot, despite the policy, because, hey, we're gonna lose a lot of spots behind the building, and that's gonna take a hit for probably the China Ruby, because people can't stop there, walk out, grab the food and go. They're gonna do another circle, and do another circle.
And also to make a double park, and park in the corner, the, the handicap over there, and all chat.
Well, what it comes down to, from my perspective, is enforcement of the, of the 15-minute parking. But it's unfair, in my eyes, to the other businesses in the area to say that we're going to have, to have somebody raise their hand and say, "I want a 15-minute parking spot in front of my location, and there are other businesses right around you that haven't had a chance. Nobody's here, nobody even knows it's on the agenda, as far as I know. Did you notify any of the other budding businesses of the fact that you were asking for this?" If, if they're all for it, fine, maybe I can accept changing the, the policy, however, when a board policy exists, it's, it's difficult for me to just say, you know, "Let's just forget the policy this time, and we'll just go ahead," I mean, that's when you start to get into some trouble.
If I may, I, I don't think it's his responsibility to know the policy, to be honest, to be honest with you. It's his responsibility to ask for time to talk about it, and it's our job to let him know what the policy is. He's already here, he's on the agenda, right? So, could he have talked to maybe the bank across the street, and then talked to maybe somebody else that may benefit from a, a short-term parking space? Yeah, he could've, but it's not his fault for not doing that, right? So, I wanna make sure you understand that, I don't think that's what we're saying.
Yeah.
There is a policy in effect, I think was what Selectman Gavin's trying to state, so, it probably would've been best if you had some momentum with some of the other business owners who would support the idea of another space or two as well, right? I, I see the benefit of it, especially in your business, you've been there a long time. I do see people trying to grab spaces when they're driving around there.
Right, yeah, it happens.
And it is difficult, but I also envision that people could do the same thing coming from the bank at certain times of the day as well, because banking transactions usually don't take much longer than 15 minutes, hopefully, right? But I do also agree that people like Jim Flaherty would be probably unhappy about that, right? Because it's taking a space that his customers could actually use there as well, too, so... And to Tim's point on the paper store, I know it doesn't especially say the paper store is spot only, but they're the ones that really monitor that spot for the 15 minutes, in my experience. They're always taking a look to see who's, who's parking there long-term, right? So, and it's kinda out of the way of the China Ruby for them to monitor that, too, so, I'm up for making a compromise someplace here. I think there's spots on the alleyway that we could probably do something with that would be less of an impact, but I know we're losing spaces in the town because of the rail trail, but at the same time, we need to support the businesses so they can be able to, you know, their customers can actually have some sort of a pleasurable experience there, right? So, people can't get a spot to pick up food, they may not wanna come back. We don't want that.
That makes sense. Because we do a lot of checkout, you know, because then more...
I understand that.
Less than the five minutes they're left. So in the, in the paper store parking space, they always fill up over there, I know a reason, yeah, people always parked there.
I think my, my perspective is that, you know, and I, I have respect for my colleagues' comments, but my perspective is that we've been hearing from the business owners that they're very concerned about the lack of parking downtown. Not lack of 15-minute parking spaces, but lack of parking for their customers. When somebody wants to come down and have an experience downtown, we don't want them there for 15 minutes, we want them there for three hours, or just so they can come back, feed the meter again, and, and go back out. Not a 15-minute parking. And, you know, we've been battling now as a, as a board for the last, you know, six months, trying to, to identify ways that we can address the lack of parking downtown, and putting in temporary spots where we actually are losing a spot because it becomes a, a 15-minute parking spot is not, in my eyes, consistent with the approach that we've been trying to, to take.
I don't know that, I don't know that we're losing a spot, but you have to understand too, Kenny, that, you know, the, the parking space in front of the paper store is not theirs, it's anybody's.
Yeah, I know.
And if someone was to say, "Well, we're gonna open up a second 15-minute spot, and it's gonna be in the, in the alleyway, and it's gonna be one of those two spots," that's not your spot, that's just a's' spot.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, that's part of the concern. I, I agree with Terrence 100% that, you know, I, I don't have problems when I go to your place, 'cause I go crazy hours, you know, like when these meetings are over.
That's right.
Flaherty can park whenever I want, but I have a lot of problems in, in downtown when I wanna go to the, to the bank on Saturdays, or Friday afternoon, or Thursday afternoon, finding a spot. I can nev, I can never find a spot, usually, I mean, to drive around Maynard twice to find a parking spot is crazy, but you have to some days. So, I don't know that we're gonna lose a spot, the spot's gonna be filled, and as much as it benefits Kenny, in my opinion, it also benefits the people that are gonna use it for whatever the purpose, whether it's to run into the bank across the street, or run into the other bank, or anywhere else, as long as it's, it's, it's policed properly by, by somebody, I mean, I don't, I don't know that we're...
Longer than 3:30 in the afternoon.
Okay, I'm not gonna do that early, but, I don't know, I personally had never seen this policy before today myself, so, I wasn't aware that it existed either.
It's somewhat confusing when you read through it, because it refers to the red meter about 50 times, and we don't have red meters, right? So, it's kinda hard to take it, a real serious look at this, when it, it looks like a proposal almost, less than a policy, that's all.
Has this been voted and entered?
It was, subsequent to the, that submission. I can't tell you the date, it was sometime around October...
Again, I, I've never seen anything painted red downtown, and, and I don't even know what, what these are, and it, there's, we have four such spaces? Yes.
We have five, I think. We have five, I think.
Well, we have four and one guy that puts his own bucket out every day.
We have one in front of the Main Street Liquors, we have one in front of the one with the guy, there's one down there, the...
Taylor.
The Taylor, yeah, the dry cleaner.
Who? I thought his space was not legitimate.
There's one that's permanent, yeah.
That's permanent, the Mariah Liquors was put in the temporary.
Mariah Liquors was put in the...
That's the one that wasn't approved.
And we have one in front of Paper Store, we have one in front of the old pizza place down at the end of Main Street, and then there's one other.
Which end?
There's one directly next to the church, right at the entrance to the church, the former brickout pizzeria.
So...
Oh, the old neighborhood pizza.
Yeah.
Yeah, where the, whatever it was called, Neighborhood Pizza?
Neighborhood, yeah.
So we had Neighborhood, we had the Dry Cleaner, we had the Paper Store, and we had the Main Street Liquors.
Why don't we just move the space from in front of the place that doesn't need it anymore to in front of the China Ruby in the Paper Store? And then we'll maintain the same numbers.
There are other businesses there that do take out?
I know. I'm kind of being facetious, but I don't, you know, I...
So so far, Nason Street, only one, right? The only one in Paper Store.
Right.
Nason Street, the whole Nason Street.
Not the Paper Store, Nason Street.
Yeah, Nason Street, yeah.
Not the Paper Store is spot.
But they have three bin over there, they have people just in and out for 15 minutes of bin.
Well, Kenny, obviously, you have never seen this piece of paper.
No.
Correct? Okay, so you've never seen it. So what I suggested we do is I'm going to give this to you tonight.
I have an extra copy.
I'll give you my copy, because I've already read it. I'll give you my copy, okay?
Okay.
If you have, you know, we'll take a look at that, see what it says, you know how to find me, we can talk about it and see what you need to do, right? And see what needs to be done for that, and see if we can do what that says and come back and we'll do it again.
Okay.
You know, get done what needs to be done, if we can, and see where it goes. And then if we get to that point, I don't think that anyone here objects to the idea of helping you with the parking space, but since we have a policy in place, we should follow it. So I give you that, you see what it is. If you need any help, you can call Kevin, or you can call me or anyone else, and we'll help you work through it, and we'll see if we can get to the point where you're happy, the neighbors are happy, and the five of us will be happy, and then we'll have some more...
All time happy, yeah, okay.
Okay. Is that fair?
Yeah.
All right, so...
I got to read it over first.
Read the policy, we'll see where it goes. If you need to get people involved to help, to talk to your neighbors, Kevin can probably help talk to your neighbors, he knows most of them, and we can see where we can go to solve the problem for you.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay?
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Now get back to work before Jennifer comes looking for you. I will not eat there tonight. Yes, sir!
I'd like to make a couple of comments about the last bit of discussion.
Yes, sir.
Number one, Selectman Gavin has pointed out, there are places downtown that have 15-minute parking running, which I think of one in particular, one of mine happened to park there.
Thank you.
Particularly going in to buy packaged goods, and the people who ran the facility came out and told them they couldn't park there because it was reserved for their customers for 15 minutes. I think this policy needs to be looked at again, because when my store was down on Nason Street, the human cry then was that there wasn't enough parking, but if you checked the off-street parking areas, there was plenty of parking off-street. But this doesn't relate to this. This relates to, I would imagine, that this customer is coming in for a pickup for a to-go order, okay? So if everybody in town wants that, I suppose it's all right. But somewhere along the way, when I was president of Chamber of Commerce, we spent a considerably amount of money to take the area down and back where the Mexican restaurant is and the other side of Bobico's, and set that up for a parking area with, the stipulation was, no parking meters, so that you could have all-day parking down there if you desired, okay? And you have to remember, Mr. Chairman, that we still have a viable street there called Nailor Court, which everybody seems to ignore, all right? But the point being that the Commonwealth in its wisdom was holding some classes at the old Co-op Building, and I don't know whether you know where that is or not, but it happens to be out on Main Street, and they told their students to park in that lot. In the meantime, we had a member of the Board of Selectmen who used to eat breakfast regularly at Bobico's, and Bob started giving him a hard time. Next thing you know, we end up with parking meters in an area that was designated for all-day parking that the Chamber of Commerce put up. So I think you really have to review it, because in a lot of places, if you want to reserve parking spaces, you can even paint a yellow line on a curb, and the business pays X amount a year for revenue to allow their customers to park in what they call a 15-minute or a reserved parking area. So I think you really need to look at it a little further, because you've got a couple of package stores right now that are doing it, all right? And now you've got another one, and I would imagine that probably there are other places down there that would probably like the same privileges. I know we reserve a parking, a couple of parking spaces for the post office, so, I mean, I think you need to review your policy.
That's a federal spot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. To your point and to Selectman Gavin's point as well, parking is going to become a very big issue in the very near future, and it's something that we're very well aware of. Andrew and the rest of the, you know, the staff, the economic development committee, everyone's looking at the parking and how we're going to solve that problem. So I think this is just another piece to that whole puzzle. And I can tell you that, at least from what I know right now, the only one up here that was aware of that particular policy about parking before this evening was David, and the rest of us didn't know about it. So it's just another item insofar as the parking puzzle goes that we're going to have to consider. So we certainly will consider it. As far as when they put their meters and everything, that was before my time.
That was before my time.
I think before my time on Earth, never mind in Maynard, but we will address it, we will give it, you know, due consideration. But parking is going to be a huge issue, and I'm probably pretty glad, you're probably pretty glad that you don't have to fight with the parking downtown right now because you're over on 62, but it's going to be an issue and it's something that we're going to consider and can deliberate over quite a bit. So I appreciate the comments, and that's that. Now, the next item, Maynard Golf Course, Mr. Osgood, Mr. Duran, come on up.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. My name is Kevin Osgood.
Kevin, nice to see you.
I'm handing out just a quick report that's actually, we're going to be following, so you'll have the information in your hands while we're going through it.
Thank you.
And then what I'd like to do is jump into just a brief slideshow right now to just kind of show everybody some pictures of some of the recent improvements on the tee boxes at the golf course, but then also some other improvements that have gone on at the golf course recently, so...
Before we continue, do you have any extras of those? Or are you running a PowerPoint? I think our audience might ask for them, so I'm just addressing it.
I do not.
Okay. Is you running it up there?
The PowerPoint, no, the PowerPoint is only photos.
Does anybody want a copy I can share with Terrence? Somebody.
I can make some if anybody needs one.
All right.
There we go. That's what I was waiting for.
A little slow tonight, Vic. We were doing that for you, holding it up for you.
Tim was basically setting it up, throwing you a softball.
It's about to patch, I promise. You gonna make it?
I moved. That turned white and pasty like the last guy. Just throw me under the table. Record time.
I'm not sure.
This isn't covered under our IT contract?
Get a new kid in here.
I have a Duff card, I need a membership.
I think I'm significantly responsible for the increase. You can ask anyone. He packs a golf cart everywhere.
Mr. IT, why don't he jump in and help? You just sit there.
Any IT workers in the crowd? Anyone? Row around a laptop. Old school. As much as I want the townsfolk to be able to see it, I would prefer to see it ourselves without having to get out of my chair. That's not hoping it comes up. Dave, you want to do this? Was it strapped? I think we moved them up.
If you want to, I could just switch your rotation right now, just start going through the written report right now and then show the slideshow afterwards.
That's good.
Want to go that direction?
Yeah, sooner or later they'll get that going.
Okay. First is just revenue. At this point in time, season tickets for 2015 had already been closed. We took in a 6% increase over 2014 numbers. In greens fees, we've actually had a very strong growth year with a 32% increase in greens fees over 2014 on a year-to-date through the month of August, and golf carts have seen a 29% increase in growth. So overall, we've had a strong year in growth at the golf course in both revenue and rounds and all operations. Capital paid out year-to-date is $47,793 at this point in time, with the last capital project being the tee project, which, when we get the slideshow going, we'll be able to walk through that project. Business overall continues to be good. Much of it's being related to the golf course conditions, being in such great shape. August greens fees, we had a growth of 11% over same period last year in August. Overall, we've had strong year-over-year growth in rounds since we started the operation when the town purchased it after 2011. 2012 rounds were $13,000. In 2013, our rounds were $14,255. We had just slightly less than a 10% growth. 2014 rounds were $17,577, 23% increase over 2013. And at this point in time, we're doing a projection on a $20,633 year-end, subject to the weather staying reasonable and not getting any washouts for the months of September and or October before we close out our season. If we do close out at that number, we'll end up with an 18% increase on growth of rounds in 2015. So overall, you know, we've been able to continue a steady growth. I think we'll start to slow the growth numbers down in the percentage as we move, because I probably see the projected high point at the golf course at being somewhere between 23,000 and 26,000 rounds. So you're not going to see a continued growth rate of 20% year-on, year-on, year-on and year-out. It's just not, the golf market doesn't command that amount of rounds at this point in time. So we will see that slowing down over the next few years. Leagues, great growth in league play. Brad, do you have any comments on leagues?
Yeah, our in-house leagues showed about a 20% increase this year, and we brought in a new league from Fort Devens this year. They had 16 consistent players, some weeks they had 20, some weeks they had 12, and they were already committed to come back next year, and they're hoping to have 24 next year, so...
Yeah. Season passes this year in 2015, we were very happy to actually stop the sinking sales we had been dropping. The very first year in 2012, we had high season ticket sales because the old Maynard Country Club membership bought memberships for all of their past equity members that year. So that plus new additional members was our highest level of season pass sales back in 2012. We dropped off in 2013, we dropped again in 2014, and as you can see in the numbers on top of the sheet, we actually grew by 6% in 2015. And I'd say we could project, you know, with just early September sales as we start to market our 2,000 memberships right now with a buy in September, you can play the balance of the fall for free and get a membership and pay for your next year's membership. We've actually, on just today, I guess, end of August interest, and today we've seen some strong interest in buying memberships, so I think we're going to see some growth in that again this year coming up, which will be really nice. Season passes, you know, out of the 107 passes that we have right now, 35 of them, or 33% are Maynard residents. Acton, 24 passes, 23%. Sudbury, 21 passes, 19%. Concord, 15 passes, 14%. And all the other towns around the area are 12 additional with 11% there. Maynard play, you know, we don't have a specific way to track who is a resident player other than through the season passes, but if you follow that similar format, that we had 33% of our season pass play came from Maynard, then that would equate to approximately 6,000 rounds of golf will end up getting played at the golf course this year out of our 20,000 by Maynard residents. Lessons, clinics, Brad, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, lessons and clinics have gone very well this year. Jim Callahan has been there two years now doing the junior program, and 2015 numbers were double what they were in 2014, and his, even his regular private lessons doubled this year. So he just closed out the junior camps last week and put those numbers together for me. So been a very good season junior-wise, a lot of junior play. High school had quite a few kids out, they've played their first four or five practices, and they have, I believe, 16 kids this year, so junior play has been very good.
Which, again, with that, with the high school offer, that we do host the high school at no charge at the golf course, so they do play for free there. Junior golf, I guess, want to roll right into that?
Yeah, again, junior play, like I say, has been up pretty good. You can see junior season pass play is up 20%, overall junior rounds are up 15%. We had the NEPGA Junior Tournament in there twice this year. They did a new after-school program this year. It was fairly small, they had about 20 kids, but it was a pilot program, and we were only the second week that they had rolled it out. And then we had a junior tour event that had 40 kids, and that's the third year that we've done that one, so we'll continue to host that tournament. And then we started up a PGA Junior Golf League this year, which was with Quail Ridge, Stowe, Groton, Maynard, and Chelmsford got together to make one team, because we didn't have enough kids from either one, and that went over really well. And that's an intermediate-type program for juniors, ones that aren't quite ready to play like at the high school level, but they're a little bit too good to be called real beginners. And they play a scramble format, it's a very fun team atmosphere, the kids get numbered jerseys, so it's more like a baseball-basketball atmosphere. And we won one match out of eight, but the kids had an absolute ball.
The PGA Junior League is something that's being done nationally across the country, and it's geared to growth of the game of golf. It's the, having the baseball league-type setup on it with the jerseys and the team play has really exploded across the country. So it's something that we're just trying to work on here at Maynard to build and help grow the game of golf with our local juniors and get them involved in the game on a non-competitive, but competitive, but a comfortable level of a game. Building, function hall renovations that we had going on through the season, if we can get the photos up, we'll be able to show those, but have been completed. The function hall painting got finished up, the fireplace is done, artwork is all complete, and the room truly looks absolutely beautiful. We've got nothing but positive comments and incredible amount of compliments on how good the room looks, so... Functions, at this point, year-to-date through August, we've hosted 40 functions at the club versus 29 funk... versus 29 functions the same period in 2014 with a 40% increase. Grounds, the golf course continues to be in very good shape. New construction was just completed on the second tee complex and the eighth tee complex. Great reviews from the players. We're really excited to have them available to play later this fall. And looking forward to a tee surface that we actually can maintain grass on and give the golfers a good level surface and good playing condition to play on. Irrigation wells and waters, the entire golf course is being operated by pond water through our shallow gravel wells and through our deep rock wells. And everything is working great, and we're holding up under even this current drought with available water. So. And that's my information. And if you have the slides available, I'd be happy to show them.
Fortunately, appears the third camera that was added a few weeks ago has created a patching problem where the laptop no longer feeds up to the monitors. We see it in the rack, but we can't feed it up. Sorry, Kevin.
Sorry. I can leave them with you. You can show them sometime.
We'll email you the slideshow.
Yeah.
What about food and the catering piece? That's not mentioned anywhere. What's the story with that?
As far as what specific details?
Well, I mean, that's part of the entire piece of the town. It's not mentioned anywhere in here, what you're doing in the kitchen and what the food service is and how that's doing year-to-date as opposed to other years-to-date and so on and so forth.
Okay.
So I'm just concerned about just asking about how that's doing and what you see happening there.
I hadn't been requested to provide that information in the past, but I'll be happy to add it into the reports. It comes into the financial detail data that goes in each month with a complete report. I just didn't, for tonight's meeting, I didn't put that on my agenda and didn't have it to provide.
What would be your recollection of it? If you ask what your recollection is of the food this year-to-date, how is it doing? Do you not know? Do you have a feel for it?
No, I think the food is doing relatively well right now. We're happy with our caterer that's taken it over this year. They're, I mean, the golfer feedback that we're getting, they like what's being served. The quality is decent. They're happy with it. The function business, they're our preferred caterer. We'll still accept an outside caterer to the facility if the customer pushes or wants that. But we also have an awful lot of functions that do not have food with them. They're just a rental function, and they don't request or want food. So our caterer is providing the preferred menu for the function business. It's working out fine. And then we've got a few events with outside caterers. We've got a number of events with no caterers, with no food.
The only reason I asked that question, because it was a little bit of a point of contention in the contract negotiations.
Yep.
So I was just kind of curious. But I can tell you that not too many people have eaten more food up there than I have this year, and the food is great, and so are the people that are doing it. So there's no problem with it. I'm just curious as to where it was at.
Yeah, I compared the numbers, as that goes, May, June, July, after I had Leanne's numbers, to compare them to what we did. And I think she was up about 10%, 12%.
That's all, Chris?
Across the board. Yeah, could be.
Listen, I probably shouldn't, I'm not supposed to, no one knows I go there and eat during the day.
Yeah, so I think her numbers are just consistently a little bit better than what we were doing.
Not an issue. Just was curious. But so I go there, probably, I'm probably there more than Brad.
They're earlier than Brad.
They're earlier than a lot of people. But that's a whole different story. I only have one concern. And I will agree with your assessment that the place is in great shape, and there's a lot of good things going on. The one concern I have is a safety concern.
Yep.
And my safety concern is that there's a lot of people that, you know, I'm assuming they're for Maynard, because the property's in Maynard, that tend to think that that's a dog-walking area or a Sunday stroll area. And I'm not sure that they should be there.
Yep.
Because it's a safety hazard for them, you know, and their pets, or however that's, you know, whoever you want to look at. It's just, it's a concern. You know, Sunday morning, I don't know, 8:00, you know, lady's walking her dog, you know, down the hill in Aitken. If you ever, I mean, I know you guys have both played there. Walking behind the eighth green is a dangerous place for anybody. You can ask Jim Foley.
Yeah, just ask Jim.
How many balls he picks out of his yard. I mean, she's walking her dog down there. And, you know, I happen to not be playing the last few holes. And she says, oh, you're the official driver. I said, no, I'm just the jerk with the bad shoulder. But the point is that she shouldn't be out there walking her dog while there's guys out there golfing, at least not in my opinion. And you see it, you know, I mean, the guy that's out there at 6:30 in the morning, I get it. But people that are out there, you know, prime time, Saturdays and Sundays, taking a walk or taking a walk with their pets is a dangerous situation. And I just, you know, just something I think that you guys might want to address, because the first person that gets hit with a ball, they're not, they're coming to you.
I totally agree. We had the one.
They're coming up to you guys. They're not going to come here. They're going to go right to you guys and want to know what you're going to do about the lump on my head, you know, my pain and suffering and all that. And it's just a concern that I've had, and that's.
What would help us best at the golf course is if your board, if the town establishes the rules on when public can access the golf course. And what I mean by that is I have other municipal golf courses that I operate, and they've established specifically that the public is not allowed for dog-walking and kite-flying and skiing or cross-country skiing or other activities during the golf season between essentially April to November. Then during the off-season, the golf course becomes available. We don't have any, and at our other courses, we posted signs, and then therefore, when the staff goes out to the neighbor that walks out of their front door and walks in the golf course and gets in an argument with the staff that the town owns the golf course, they have the right to go out there, it's a little bit, it would be a lot better position for us if the town established a regulation that simply, it was a golf course play only during the golf season, and then during the off-season, which we do and advertise and promote, the, you know, cloud parking lot and open access for people to cross-country ski and use the facility. So that's what would help us out.
All right. Well, we'll definitely have that in place for the beginning of next year, if not the end of this year.
That'd be good, because I know when there was talk about future uses of the course and with the senior center moving in there, that they could walk up and down the hills at certain times of day and exercise. And it was just different uses. I know the CPC talked about it a little bit, too, seeing that they bought the place. Yeah, so maybe sell them a guy.
I mean, on a day-to-day basis, it'd be helpful. From my standpoint is, if you're out on 8:00 and somebody's walking down the middle of the fairway, call the pro shop.
Yeah.
You know, because we had that one lady that she literally came from behind Christmas Motors with a beach chair and sat in front of the pond on 4 in her beach chair while her boxer chased geese in the pond.
That's another thing. What are you planning on doing with the geese? They seem to be getting pretty bad, and people are complaining.
Please, help us.
Do we let the dogs run around?
Buy a couple of herons, because they stayed away when he was there.
Oh, no. That one day I was out chasing, I chased them for four hours, and the heron was sitting there.
Are those fake dogs or fake wolves or whatever work?
They don't work.
They don't work. The fake dogs don't work.
They'll work for a couple of days, and then they get used to them. I've talked to a couple of professional companies, and the dogs will chase them into the pond, but they won't scare them off the property. And then they get used to the dogs and.
Boarder collies are the best. If you have a boarder collie, call it out there on a regular basis. We've, Brad, contacted a few services around, but they won't come out this far to the golf course here. And it has to be done on a regular basis, constant. My superintendent has purchased and used both last year and has recently been shut down from use of them, which is the cracker guns. Essentially, they're like a firecracker gun used for scaring the goose off and away. And we've recently been told that they're going to neighbors. So.
Why we shut down on that?
We received a complaint.
Okay. A noise complaint?
Yes.
All right.
And we spoke.
But even those, they work for three or four days.
They help.
They get used to them, and then they start flying away.
It's a, having the maintenance crew on a constant basis, running around, chasing them out, and using the cracker guns to scare them off and get them off the property. But even with that, they'll, when they, they'll go in the pond and, you know.
So we're talking about a town that has a gun club in it that is constantly firing all day long, that I can hear in my house on the north side of Maynard. And we're shutting down something because someone had a noise complaint about a noise trying to get rid of nuisance geese on a golf course. It doesn't.
Might have been a golfer that was trying to swing.
I've been there when it's gone off. It is pretty loud. But I'm saying, I mean, how else are we supposed to do work? So.
I don't think it would affect your swing any, but.
It's not going to affect my swing. We know that. Because it's going to be the same poor swing, as it always is. But my point is, there's only so many things you can do to geese, because you can't harass them so much, right? Because they're protected in some, in some status. But I mean, we're going to shut, which is really viable during the day. People are playing, they're paying money to play golf there, to have an experience. And I can tell you, the geese are a major problem. Major league problem. They ruin greens. I'll let someone from the public talk about it. They ruin the greens. They ruined the experience most recently. And if we're going to do something about, because we had a noise complaint, that's something we need to talk about as a board, I think, because I'm not for that. Because the argument is, there's gunfire going on all day long that you can hear all across town. That's just as big of a nuisance. That's how I feel about that. We've had, Mr. Doyle had a question, I think, or a comment.
I'm just going to make one statement. You are, the geese have a material impact on the course. The other day, we couldn't putt across the fourth green because there's so much. Right, we'll call this out. And there are people who are not playing here right now because of these problems that are here. And I believe that making this change for one individual, this is actually impacting thousands of rounds over the course of several weeks. I think you should revisit that.
We've had the geese, we've had the geese issues for the three years that we've been at the golf course. And we've had a reasonable level of success with cracker guns on get them out to a level to keep them out of there, so they haven't settled in. But.
What is it? Is this a cap gun? A large cap gun or something?
Similar.
They're called screamers. So you pull a little string, and it flies 10 feet above them, and it makes a screaming noise as it goes above them. And then it goes bang, bang, bang. Less, half the, half the noise of a firecracker.
Okay.
You know, they make noise, yes, but.
Never heard of it. I never heard of it, but okay.
Yeah, they're not terrible.
Just hit them with a cart.
I had a couple more things, Chris, if you wouldn't mind. Not about the geese, but just in general.
Okay. Questions? Terrence, you're up.
Yeah, along with safety concerns, I mean, I'll put this back to Kevin and Brad. The car paths, terrible. I mean, coming off of, you know, two to go to three, I'm surprised no one's run off the road and had an accident. And, you know, going down off of eight, you know, to get to eight, that's terrible as well. Path going over the hole from five to six, terrible. I mean, these are all, I mean, there's not just younger players who are playing there this year, although there's quite a few of them. There's people who could, who get hurt. There's potholes there that are pretty deep. I would love to see or hear your plan about how we're going to address this going forward more, because granted, the one going from hole eight all the way up to nine is tar and it's broken apart. I understand that's a cost of that. But the other ones, there seemingly is no maintenance. And I have spent a lot of time at the course this year. So I, you know, I can't compare it to last year, because I didn't play there last year but one time.
They're in the exact same condition they were when we took the golf course from Maynard Country Club. They hadn't been maintained for ages. They hadn't had mix put down on them. We probably put two loads of the reprocessed asphalt wrap mix out there just in potholes or small areas and filling patches. But that's it. I've provided Andrew with a capital list on the golf course that we worked out from well over a year ago on just all the items, from that to bunker rebuilding to many, many items like the car path. And the car path is one of the items on them. I've had a contractor, it's actually, this goes back a year ago now, but I had a contractor out that measured the paths and gave us a quote basically to resurface. I mean, put a four-inch wrap mix and resurface all of the car paths out on the golf course. What that cost was, I haven't looked at it recently. I couldn't tell you what it is. You know, we chose the highest, what we felt were the highest priority golfer projects this year, which was rebuilding the second tee complex and rebuilding the eighth tee complex because of four, the seventh tee complex and the fifth tee complex. But that's, of the operation while we've been there, those have been the highest level complaints by the golfers that don't like the course conditions that we haven't been able to maintain properly. So those were the two big projects.
I understand you have a finite amount. You've got to go for what's the most impactful, you think, and educated guess. I'm just saying, if you're bringing new folks in, which is what we aspire to do, you're trying to increase revenue. Not everybody has the history and knows how to swerve around certain parts of the path at the right time. So we're waiting for some, especially as you start to get younger kids, teenagers who are driving there, someone's going to get hurt.
Yeah. One possible route, and I've actually brought this up with Andrew and Aaron both at previous meetings and stuff, is having the availability for the town during their slow part of the season, in between leaf cleanup and before snow plowing start, to be able to resurface the paths. They have the equipment. They have the ability. It's something that Chelmsford's done in the past, that the DPW surfaced all the paths at the golf course. You know, if that can happen, that pushes it faster forward. But otherwise, it probably falls into next year's capital. But yes, they desperately need to be done. We do know that.
Yeah, they're in rough shape. They have been for a very long time. But they're, most specifically, when you come down off of two to three, that is, that is, that's getting tough. That's getting almost impassable. And you, you know, you really, as much as it's a safety concern, it's also going to be a concern for the, you know, the safe operation of the carts and any damage to the carts.
Yep.
It's just a concern. But any more questions, Mr. Donovan?
Thank you.
David?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Jeff. First of all, gentlemen, thank you for what you've done with the course. I think, you know, I'm not a golfer myself, former golfer, tired, for various reasons. But all of the feedback that I get is positive. I hear the issues from the people who are actually using it, and I'm sure that, you know, those are issues that are aware, that you guys are aware of and will be addressed in one way or another. But overall, to see 63% of my numbers are correct, 63% increase in rounds of golf played since you first took over is remarkable. When people were telling us back in the day that this was never going to work, I think that's a great testament to what you guys have done, as well as to the people who stuck with it, some of the, you know, former members who continued to push it and play and whatever. I have a question, though, about those rounds. Is there any way that you can tell how many of those golfers are unique versus repeat golfers? In other words, people who are coming all the time versus people who for one time come and have never played before and might, you know, someday come back?
Definite number? No, I couldn't tell you that. But, Chris, these guys can all say.
It's a high number of people coming back.
Yeah.
And they come back because the course is in good shape and.
Repeat golfers is the majority of it.
There's a lot of it, yeah.
Okay, great. The other one is more of a town-related question. How have you found the interaction with the senior center? And how has that dynamic worked, having them as your partners over there and everything else?
Yeah, I mean, we had our growing pains in the very beginning. You know, it happened over the wintertime, and the deck hadn't been completed yet. So access was through the function hall, which we had just put a brand-new floor down. And they were tracking salt and sand and, you know, so there was some issues there. But, you know, once the deck got done and they understood that their access was around on the deck, I would say very minimal problems. You know, Amy's been great to work with.
You're happy to have them, then?
Yeah, they've had a couple of functions there. Couple of, you know, a couple of days when they're real busy and the golf course is real busy, parking is, you know, a little bit of an issue. But, you know, them not being there on Saturdays and Sundays when we're really busy, you know, Fridays is probably the biggest thing. But she was having aerobics class on Friday, 11:00, 12:00 timeframe. And that's when we started to get really busy on the golf course. And I just spoke to her about it and asked her if she could change it to another day. They moved it to Tuesday, I believe, and now no longer an issue. So, you know, there's been a good back and forth with them.
Glad to hear that.
The parking issue, we've actually discussed this at our regular meetings with Andrew and Aaron. And we're actually hoping, as you first pull in the parking lot, on the right-hand side, there's a lower-level parking lot that's virtually used for mulch, stone, car path mix, and there's top dressing sand, and there's a divot mix load in there that is our only location to store our mixes to operate the golf with. We've had discussions with Andrew and Aaron about the possibility in the future to work with the town to clear up some of the area where the old, where the gas tank that's now moved up to the Quonset Hut, where the gas tank had been stored out off the left-hand side of the eighth hole, to be able to clear out an area there to level it, set up the jersey barriers in there. And then we could open up that whole parking lot and set up our sand bins and divot mix and soil bins and everything there, and open up that lower-level parking lot to add, increase the parking lot for the golf course. So that will help if we can get that done at some stage.
Very good. Thank you.
Jason?
Yes, I have two quick questions. Year-to-date through August, you've hosted 40 functions?
Yes.
Are you holding, when are you seeing those functions? Are they during the day, weekends?
Yeah, majority, 90% are Friday, Saturday.
Okay. Okay.
A few on Sundays, but very, very few during the week.
Okay, so I mean, you're effectively keeping, you know, we're busy pretty much every weekend, is what it looks like?
Yeah.
It was, it was kinda, I mean, we're kinda slow, you know, kinda slow in, in January and kinda slow in February. We started picking up a little bit in March. Kind of the spring season, you know, April made June, and June, high school graduations and stuff, we're very busy. July was quite slow, August, you know, as I know right now, has been fairly slow too, which is very typical. All of our facilities dropped like a rock during July especially and August. And then they'll start to pick back up in September, and then usually October, November, December start to get a little bit busier.
I think, I think right at the moment, we've got about 20 functions moving forward for the fall.
Okay.
So, you know, hopefully we'll get up to the 80 mark. Typically, we're the, we're gonna book it a month out, six weeks out. You know, it's not the, I'm gonna book my wedding a year, two years in advance, like a lot of bigger halls, so we do a lot of...
December's already completely booked.
Yeah, December actually is very busy.
See, they all like the new function hall.
Very good. The other question I had was, you have 11% of season passes are from, not from Maynard Act and Sudbury Concord.
They're sprinkled all over the place.
How far away are we seeing people?
You know, I think we have one member from Andover, but most of them are just 10 miles away, 11 miles away.
Okay, next town out.
Yeah.
So we're still pulling from...
There's two from here, there's two from there, one from there, I just didn't feel like typing them all out.
No, that's more than okay. I was just curious as to how far we might have folks traveling in to, to play the course.
Most of those guys are guys that work in the area that it's convenient in the afternoons and stuff.
Exactly.
More convenient if you get out of work at four to play here than drive back to Andover or some other places.
I think we have two Altham members. Again, I think Chris is right, they work in the area.
Yeah. And one question for Kevin. There's been some discussion about limiting use of the golf course for safety reasons, and I, I would just be curious to know if there's any restriction on that because of how this land was purchased as open space and recreation area. If we start excluding, even if it's for their own safety, excluding folks from the, from the course for periods of time, I just wanna make sure that it's not, there's no issues or gray area there with the community preservation funding for which it was purchased.
I think, I mean, that's something we'll look into as we look at the policy to review. Yeah, the CPC money specifically is for, you know, outdoor recreation functions, and yeah, we have to look at that a little closer for the restriction.
Thank you.
Timothy?
Overall, just looks like good progress. Keep up the good work. I think maybe Maynard resident discount would help anything about repeat golfers coming back. Just a thought.
Yeah. I, I honestly, our price point is very good at the golf course right now. I don't think dropping a dollar or two, it typically adds more aggravation for the guy that's standing beside him and somebody's gotta provide, you know, a driver's license or gotta provide a tax bill or what you're providing for it, you know. It's, it's a hard thing to manage. I think right now, we're happy to just, you know, keep it a one-price golf course.
Any public questions or public comments before we wrap things up? Yes, Mr. Doyle?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a couple of comments and questions from both the town and Aaron. First thing I wanna do is, I wanna say Kevin, Brad, you guys have done a great job, right? And I won't go, you know, you guys have covered a lot of it up there. Course is great, the people you hire are very good, they're personable, they make you feel welcome, the service we get up there is great, and the course is in great condition, et cetera, right? We've talked about all of that. There are a couple of things that I would like to go into, though, a little more detail here. One is around the catering, right? You know, carry-in and the caterers, food is good, they're, they're friendly, very happy with them, okay? There has been some concern in terms of the hours that they keep, however, them not being there during their posted hours. Why, why is that? You know, you're losing revenue because of that. I know there have been disappointed customers that are there at times. And, you know, what's your plan to address it and what's your agreement with it?
That they're not there during the posted hours.
Correct.
Uh, it's news to me, Brad, can you answer on that, or?
Yeah, I mean, other than, I know, one or two days, carry-in's been a half hour late.
Even last, even last week, they left early and there were people who were...
Okay, then that's, again, like Kevin said, news, news to me. If somebody doesn't bring it to my attention, I can't bring it to Leanne's attention that this is happening, so...
Yep.
I would just ask that, you know, I be kept in, in the loop.
There's been some issues with the cleanliness of the restaurants, and my understanding there's a little bit of confusion in terms of who's responsible for cleaning that. My understanding is, the contract has the town being responsible for the cleaning, the regular cleaning of the restaurants. And yet, they've been dirty enough that Sterling has had to take on some of this responsibility. What is the, what's the cleaning schedule that the town has and how, how that thing managed?
I'll defer to Andrew on that. I don't recall what, how he crafted that.
Yeah, this is similar to the issue of the caterings. First, I've heard of an issue there, but the agreement we have with Sterling is that the town cleans Monday through Thursday, because those are the days that we're primarily using the facility. Sterling handles it on the weekends. They also do evenings when they have functions, that sort of thing. They keep up with, with the mess that they're making, let's put it that way. So if the complaints are centered around Monday through Thursday, even Friday morning, you know, by all means, the town needs to pick it up. If it's because of weekend issues, it falls back on Sterling.
Okay.
So more, more specific feedback would be helpful, we'll be happy to address it.
Yeah, and just hearing it, we'll, we'll pay closer attention to it, even so if it's an issue with the town, that we can work directly with Andrew on it, but...
Okay, great. The pond pump has been, fountain has been inoperating, not operating for the last several weeks, and the pond is looking and smelling different because of it. What is your plan to get that addressed?
Yeah. Patrick, my golf course superintendent, has let me know that the pump's down. I don't know how far he is in research and replacement or repairs or anything. I will say that, you know, simply in the month of August, it's probably about one of the lowest priorities he's got right now, you know, trying to keep a golf course green in this, you know, heat, humidity and everything else, but it will be addressed.
We have some input on that, that's pretty current.
I can speak to that a little bit more detail. Patrick has done some research and actually reached out, or something this week, someone has taken that product over, reached out to a contractor we use through, off the town project projects, and we come out this week to look at it, and you know, you got pump and motor back online. Great, great. I will iterate, reiterate the, the condition of the car paths in, in a couple places. It's only a couple places, but they're, they're dangerous, and that needs to be addressed at some point. The other question I have is around the auditing money, money. The, you know, the town is supposed to be giving a percentage of revenue that Sterling has, provides up to a minimum. Is the, is the revenue for the caterer being included in the reports that we're getting?
Yes.
Okay. And then to the town, how are we auditing this? Other than, other than Sterling handing us a piece of paper with a number on it, right? That is not an audit. How are we auditing the numbers?
The town accountant is doing quarterly reconciliations, so we'll be, we'll be doing that at the end of this month, it'll be for our fiscal quarter. And then annually, actually, at least, the end of, we, we did a, an additional financial audit from the town's CPA auditing firm at the end of the last one. Inspector General's office requires a certain level of audits that be done in comparison to that. That we did after a three-year cycle. So we'll continue to engage with our auditing firm for the more thorough audits that are done, and then in-house on a quarterly basis with reconciliations with the town accountant.
So you're comfortable that we're getting accurate numbers from the town?
Yes. I haven't seen a quarterly audit at this point yet, I mean, for this...
The audit done by our town accountant, or CPA firm, looked at all the previous three years and came back with some recommendations about processes that Kevin was able to implement, Kevin Osgood was able to implement. And that's what's leading to our quarterly and then annual internal audits. We'll continue to do the tri-annual full audit. There's a phrase I'm missing here, but that's what the Attorney General requires every three years or more. They're very expensive, given the amount of cash flow here. That, the recommendation is three years is adequate with the annual oversight and the, and the quarterly town accountant work.
I, I just wanna comment on that too, but the, the accountant on that audit also came back that we had reported 100% correctly and accurately in the three-year audit. There was nothing off in our financial reporting at all under a full-blown audit, okay? Any of the processes being corrected was simply timing of us getting a report to Andrew or approval on capital funding or capital spending that it needed to be done in written and things. It was, it was just, it was crossing the Ts and dotting the Is on the contract to stay in compliance with it, but it was nothing to do with financial issues at all.
Right, and, and I wasn't implying anything...
Yeah, I do, I just wanna make sure it's very clear, though.
You know, my, my concern is the cash for the, for the restaurant, right? Walks into the kitchen and disappears, right? Into, it doesn't disappear into a point-of-sale system, right? And then it's flowing into you guys and it's flowing to the, the thing, and it's revenue that, that lawfully needs to be reported on the town, it's totally true.
So the relationship with the caterer is new this year, and that is a, a concern for the town as well. In the past, it was going through the point-of-sale system. We will need to audit that organization separately from Sterling.
But this is the first year they've been involved, so we don't have any, any, anything to litmus
test that against at this point.
All right, thank you, that's all the conversation. Thanks, guys, again, great job.
To Andrew has already brought up all his concerns related to that too, and that it be justified, so he has addressed it.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns with that? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for all the hard work and good work at the golf course, and the town appreciates it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin, Brad.
Thank you.
Hey, Kevin, by the way, that special for September, October play, the next year is a really good special, so no surprise that a lot of people showed up to sign up.
Thank you for your two.
Are we keeping that, Andrew?
Thank you.
Is that our flash drive? We can circulate those photos.
I'll keep it locked down while we're getting it.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, item number 10 is gonna be removed from the agenda, that's the water and sewer abatements, which I have some comments about in a little bit. And then, item number 11, Kevin, is the Parker Street update?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just brief, I don't have much to add since our last meeting, other than that the actual draft NBOD bylaw has been submitted by a special counsel over to the developers' counsel, Attorney Kat Nizaro, for review with regards to that. There was some internal in-house review with staff and with, with Attorney Witten, and at this point, it's, it's between the two attorneys, just, we're waiting on a response back from Attorney Kat Nizaro to, to John Witten, but it's...
Was that the NBOD?
The NBOD bylaw.
Basically, the, the allowing for a senior assistant.
Right, exactly, the uses, yeah.
Okay.
It's been, it's been provided to, to the developer through their attorney, obviously with the caveat that it's not blessed by any board or the Board of Selectmen specifically. And that it's, it's just been discussed, but we needed to share it with, with those folks so we get feedback before it's formally presented and, and accepted, if you will. So that's all for now. I reached out to Attorney Witten late this afternoon just to see if there was anything I was missing, and he reiterated that's, that's where things were at currently, so hopefully, you know, continue, we'll continue to stay on, and we'll have more, more updates as we move forward.
Okay. Economic development update?
Economic development updates, the BEAT program will be officially rolling out through September 10th, doing an official program rollout. We'll be doing a sort of press release in the very near future with regards to that to try to get some interest and put the program out there. We have a downtown property business owners' meeting that's scheduled with staff for September 10th. This is the same meeting that I mentioned at our last meeting with regards to discussing Mill and Main impact on the downtown area. We should be getting official invites probably by the end of this week, hopefully with regards to that meeting. So a lot more detail that I'll, I'll forward along to the board with the specifics, but it is at this point penciled in for September 10th, probably sometime late afternoon.
3:00 P.M.
3:00 P.M.? Is it 3:00 P.M. on the 10th? Mill and Main is working with staff on some potential zoning issues and development agreement issues that they may, may or may not need. I have a meeting scheduled with folks from Saracen Properties, myself, and Bill Numzow, the town planner, is sort of our first meeting to discuss what, if anything, they may be looking to go before the board and discuss potential. It's, it's very likely they'll be before the board with requests to amend the development agreement. The question whether or not they'll actually need a town meeting vote if they're actually looking for actual zoning bylaw changes or anything of that is still un, you know, at this point, we, I'm not anticipating anything, but certainly I would anticipate that we will need some development agreement amendments. Particularly what stands out is in relation to minimum square footage of some of the retail and things that they'll be looking for to make their project work. But again, we're meeting on Thursday, kind of, this is the first time to dive into some of that. The Savoring Indian restaurant building on Main Street is listed on the market. It's, it's been listed and actually reportedly has an offer, but we don't have anything confirmed on that.
Was it listed as a restaurant?
Um, I believe it was, yeah. At le, it was listed as, you know, pre-existing restaurant space, so...
Which one?
Savoring Indian.
Waiting for a chef.
Um, the Maury's Building is also, has reportedly been purchased by Armand Suazian. It was a local developer that's come in and, and met with the town on a few projects that he's had interest in and, and potentially looking at pursuing and moving forward. But he has purchased the Maury's Building. Conversations early on was his interest was to kind of revitalize it and do a mixed-use retail, commercial project there, retail and residential situation for, for down there. I don't, I don't know, there could be a potential need, request that he may look to try to expand the existing footprint a little to the rear. It's, we haven't, again, we haven't seen anything formal, this just come in that he's actually has purchased the building, and we anticipate hearing from him soon and look forward to working with him on a revitalization to that building. The RFP, request proposals for the Veterans Memorial Park was released, and that's due back on September 21st by 10:00 a.m. Putting together a review panel for those RFPs to consist of a member from the planning board, the town planner, our facilities manager, probably a representative from parks and cemeteries, and probably our town engineer as a, as a committee to review those RFPs. Again, those are due back September 21st. Can you have the projects moving forward? I don't know if anybody was, Great Road at the beginning of last week had a chance to see the very, very large infiltration system that was brought in via crane, and that was over the course of a couple of days, there was a police detail there, but that's all now installed, and they're currently installing the sewer. Quite a, quite a project with regards to retention system, the infiltration system that was put in, which was directly behind the prior existing, the Great, the house that was just new construction on Great Road in the back there. Jason's probably sorry more than he wanted to over the last week. The board should have received a special invite from Representative Kate Hogan, invited the Board of Selectmen and members of the Economic Development Committee. She'll be joined by Congresswoman Nikki Songas for a small Maynard business store, gonna start this Thursday, September 3rd. Start at 3:15 at Mill and Main. We'll be doing a presentation with Saracen Properties on, you know, presentation... We'll be doing a presentation with Saracen Properties on, you know, presentation probably, I would imagine, similar to what we've all seen, but it will certainly, a great opportunity for Congresswoman Songas to see what they're proposing and advocate for Mained and the project. That's anticipated to be about a half an hour and then finished up about a 45-minute walk to some local businesses in the downtown and finishing up at the, at the Gallery 7 with a small little, they're going to have some sort of refreshments, et cetera. That'll be a nice opportunity to have the Congresswoman. I'll provide a little update on what we're hoping to catch up with her, too, while she's in town, so, another TA update. But that's, that's it for economic development. Anything else?
Are you coming?
Good. Questions?
You're up, Kevin.
All right. TA report. Another item of note that just came in on the same day as Representative Hogan's, we've finally have solidified a date on the same day, as I said, September 3rd at 2:00 P.M. at the Littleton Police Station. It's Lieutenant Governor Polio will join officials from Acton, Boxborough, Littleton, Mained, and Westford for a regional compact signing. Folks from the board approved the community compact application. It's been, from what I understand, very well received. It'll be the first regional community compact that will be executed. I know folks from the governor's office and I'm dealing with Sean Cronin, who is the Senior Deputy Commissioner for Division of Local Services on the Department of Revenue that's heading up the community compact on behalf of the governor's office, and they're thrilled about it, so we're excited. I know Chris and I will be in attendance. Chris will be there for the official signing as the chair of the board for the compact, and I don't know if any of the, anyone else is certainly welcome to attend, but it will be tight for, certainly for us to get back for Representative Hogan's event, but I will at least try to catch up with the group. But again, that's at 2:00 P.M. on Thursday as well, and we look forward to, to that event. Tied into that, some hopes of discussion with Congresswoman Songas and Representative Hogan with regards to the Mained Fire Station. We've kind of put the bug in the air there with regards to funding, potential funding, and any opportunities we may be able to tie into that. We're trying to tie it into communicating the importance of having the FEMA bunker 106 in the country that supports, you know, the entire Region 1 and the necessity that that, you know, that building and coordination center and the need to have a state-of-the-art, you know, modern fire station to service such facilities that's unique, such as that, and also tying it in with the fact that the State Police Crime Lab is located in town and is another unique facility location in town. So, we hope to have that conversation with her. We've already have started the conversation with Representative Hogan, and certainly she's on board and looks to help advocate for us and try to stress the importance of this, again, for the facilities more than, the uniqueness of Mained and NY, you know, perhaps we can, we can get some funding grants or some dedicated funding for such a project. The First Green Communities Grant Project for the year is going to begin tomorrow. Aaron, the facilities managers, working with those folks, they'll be retrofitting the Fowler School Gym with new LED lights, and they're scheduled to hopefully finish installation by the end of the week. Couple of quick updates on the home rule petitions. The H3331, the Civil Service, is currently in the Committee on Third Reading still at this point, and the liquor license is currently with the Senate. It's been placed in the orders of the day for the next session following its first reading. It'll be read again in order to the Committee on Third Reading in the Senate, and they'll review the bill again and make sure the language, et cetera, is kosher and move it along. So, that was the most recent update from Representative Hogan's office as of yesterday. For those that haven't had a chance to pick up on your way out, the September issue of New Generation Newsletter, the Mained Council on Aging Senior Center, that's available if you haven't received that yet. There's issues available at the bottom of the stairs on the table as well.
It came in the Saturday.
Action Unlimited.
Yeah, Action Unlimited. So, again, I think it's another, it's the second one they rolled out. I think, I think they've done a great job, and, you know, that's the type of stuff that, you know, that we're looking to, you know, utilize from a communication standpoint, but also, you know, draw our interest in, you know, from the seniors, and it's, it's really, the fact that these guys are complaining about parking, I mean, it's just phenomenal.
Admit it, from one perspective.
From one perspective, yeah. I mean, when, when the foot traffic was an average of one a day, I mean, so, we've made some great strides in some regards. It's great to hear that they're having parking issues, that many people who are non-golf players are there to utilize the Senior Center. The Town Hall phone system, just to, if you indulge me, I kind of brought up a breakdown kind of of the history where we're at, just so the board's aware of, of kind of how we got to where we are with the issues with the phones now. During the 2014, we had some issues with the phone system at the fire department. That time, we hired a company to help us determine. They basically came back and determined the server was eight years old and the software was at its end of life, that Cisco no longer supported it. Prior to any of the current administration, we had never paid for software upgrades since the original purchase, and we actually had dropped the prior service vendor some several years ago, which was Coflin. And there was a redundancy of the system, was limited by mixed models. So, we received rough quotes and explored options, including internet-based phones, merging with the systems at the school and other brands of phone systems. We've had several extensive meetings with our IT vendor, Drive Tech, in exploring internet-based phones. I mean, we're trying to look at it, I mean, there's been a, obviously, a significant investment with, with the Cisco phone system that we have, and the phones, you know, just the infrastructure of the phones themselves, never mind the, you know, the software hardware issues, but, and we also met with, we met with the IT director of the school department and looked at their system and if there's a way that we could merge our phone system in with the schools and kind of work an opportunity where the schools could manage the system on sort of a town-wide basis. We went down that road and, you know, again, we continued other brands of phone systems that were not proprietary or were not necessarily Cisco. So, we knew the system would fail, but expected it to last until we could replace it without a real rushed decision. Then this summer, we made final decisions on the brand, which was to stay with Cisco, the Cisco system and the features, needs, and then on Friday, August 21st, we received an actual updated quote for a new system. On Sunday, August 23rd, the server essentially had a critical failure after we had received the quote timely, unfortunately. Our implementer, the folks that we had recently engaged to maintain some of the phone service, because it's outside of our IT vendors' expertise, they can get through some of it, but they're not a phone servicer provider, and, you know, they deal with them directly. That was what that Coflin entity originally was utilized for, that was just, was never renewed for maintenance. So, our new implementer was able to port the newer police server and fire switch to get both of those systems up and running. The older town software was not patchable, again, because of the age of the software to express versions, so the Town Hall system itself, as you know, still remains down. On Monday, the 24th, with extensive onsite assistance, we elected to upgrade immediately. The vendor is a state contractor, so the bid process and 30B procurement wasn't needed. And then, as of tonight, we're on the phone with the vendor. The upgrades anticipated to be completed before September 11th is sort of a lead time. We're hoping, certainly, we're going to call with some other folks from there to try to push that along sooner, but we're kind of hoping that would be the latest possible timeframe. This includes shipping of all the gear, the business requirement mapping, and actual implementation. And then, one, one area that's of importance to note is just the new system will incur, include full redundancy and integrate the, we're hoping to integrate the library phones, which is currently a separate system, and we'll try to tie some of the peg stuff that we're doing with fiber rings and try to get them all onto, onto one system. So, the difference between this, obviously, is the software, it'd be a new server, current up-to-date software, and the, will be backup redundancy that will be built in, which wasn't, currently wasn't built into the, the old system, and will continue down the, the road of having a, an actual phone service provider available. So, it's unfortunate. I hope we're never in this position again, and, you know, it's kind of just somewhat of a gamble, if you will, but it's something that we've been talking about. It's been on our capital list, and we've known that there's a cost that's associated with it, like anything with technology, and we have a limited lifespan, so.
Kevin, one thing I'd like to add is...
Please.
We did not have a service contract on the system from the beginning of its installation.
Yeah.
The service we're receiving with this new system includes three years of 24/7 support, which includes all the software upgrades. So, at least over the next three years, anything comparable to this where we're out of sync with technology is covered in the price after the three years. We can obviously purchase additional years of service, but that's, I think it's something important. We've talked about what we're doing with capital planning and facilities maintenance. It's a similar type of thing. Software maintenance is a, is a critical piece of our facility management for all of the software we manage, and our phone system is clearly an important one.
Yeah, so, I mean, the initial system did have some, it was a maintenance piece into it, and prior to, you know, my time, I was here, but prior to administration, under a different administration, elected to not continue it. So, when that ended in 2010, 2011 timeframe, you know, we were at, at that point, out of luck with, with the vendor, and then you run into issues with, dealing with Cisco-only certain preferred vendors and, you know, vendors that are retails of theirs and service providers, so that's where we're at. In the meantime, we had to, we did some sort of last-minute scrambling to identify some available phones, phone lines, which have been advertised. You know, it's not ideal, but we are still able to receive calls. It's ringing, so folks are getting the message. Again, it's not ideal, but it provided a solution to at least be able to have phone communication. There's four phone numbers that have been published. I think I sent that to the board so that folks can actually still contact, and we've sort of broken it onto the four areas of town, if you will, by first and second floor and sort of wings. So, those dedicated areas, there's several handsets in those areas, and for, you know, a couple, a couple hundred dollar quick fix, we at least have phone service. The reason those are working, we're running those through, those were actual fax lines that weren't part of the, the voiceover IP system. That's why those lines work, so.
Have there been any service complaints relative to not being able to get through or people complaining about issues?
No. Yeah, I mean, I hear from some people that will just email me and say they get a funny noise, I think there's something wrong with their phone, and then we're able to get back to them through email or calling them directly. But, yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's a little inconvenient, but, you know, I think folks that, I mean, they're, what they're doing is they're, I think what they're doing is when they get it, they're going directly onto the town website and try to keep that up there so that they can at least see that there's a phone outage issue and provide numbers, because we're definitely getting phone calls, so folks are able to find us. We haven't gone anywhere. We're getting, I think we're, we're seeing a much higher level of walk-in, certainly for some departments, we're seeing a little more foot traffic, there are folks that are calling and just not bother, I'll just come down and stop in, but no real complaints that we've really heard, to be honest with you.
You sent the outbound call out, too, to...
Yeah, that's right. We did the reverse 911 system, and that, you know, reached a good portion of the population, not everybody, but...
Yeah, I don't think we ever got it, but that's okay. I had the information through other sources.
Do you know it?
I don't think we ever got the call.
2900.
E-470.
Anyway, Chris, can I ask a quick question on one of the topics that came up? Kevin, you mentioned about the civil service issue that is still marching through the legislature. My quick question is, what would happen, what would be our situation if we, for whatever reason, needed to hire a police officer tomorrow? What process would we use?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, at this point, I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be going hiring through the civil service process. I think we, you know, we would move forward with, you know, we're still waiting on the civil service.
As of right now, does Mained have the legal authority to hire outside of civil service? Even for the police department?
I guess that, that's probably subjective. We don't have an official that we're out of it. I think it depends on who you talk to, whether or not there's a legal standing on whether or not we could hire outside of civil service. We won't do it currently because there's an actual stay, if you will, but, you know, we certainly, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be looking to fill under the civil service at this point.
So, would we, we would hire outside of civil service, yet we don't have the legal authority to do that?
Yeah, well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't move on hiring.
So, in other words, we wouldn't hire anybody right now?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
The chief's here. I don't know if he wants to add anymore. Andrew?
No, I agree with you, the, it's subjective. The, the law says that you get out of civil service the same way you got in it, and we got in it through town meeting, we voted it out at town meeting.
Except for the fact the town meeting warrant, the town meeting vote was upon approval of the legislature.
Well, that's the part that I think gets subjective.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else?
It's what we do.
Is that it?
Very frustrating.
He needs to get the rest of his pants. All right. Are you done?
Uh, yeah.
Item 14, a town administrator's official vehicle. This item came up as a result of some discussions I had with Kevin in regards to the TA review that was done in June into July, and as part of the discussions, I asked a question after being in his office several days, whose car is that that sits out there that never moves? And I was told that it was his vehicle, but that it only gets used when he's zipping around town and that it doesn't move other than that, and this kind of led to a discussion as to, my question was why and what's the point of having a car that doesn't move, and that led to this discussion with Kevin. And brings us to the point where I told Kevin that perhaps he should, if that's an issue, we should discuss it in a meeting and request that we go back and grant him use of the, the vehicle that we're paying for for his use. So, Kevin, if you want to get into that a little bit, then we'll talk about it and debate it and see where it goes.
Sure. There's a memo that's been prepared for the board requesting a Board of Selectmen grant and approve the use of the official vehicle to include commuting to and from residents. It's a benefit that several employees of the town have. It's a benefit that I had for four years prior to appointment as town administrator, and somewhat, I felt was somewhat arbitrarily taken away in the sense of, under the new contract as the town administrator, you know, there wasn't a desire of the board at that time. My argument is that it's a, it's absolutely a essential part of the duties being on called... on-call 24/7, 365 days a year, it's a, uh, it's a, it's, it's a common, um, uh, benefit that's provided to, uh, the chief administrative officer of any town, um, provided the board some details there, um, both nationally, um, and certainly, uh, throughout Massachusetts, um, it's a common practice, and, uh, and then, aside from, uh, duties as a chief municipal, um, I have the added, uh, component of being the, uh, emergency management director and the, uh, ability for the vehicle to, um, respond to emergencies and, and supervise as the need arises, and, uh, the vehicle being equipped with, um, you know, VHF, UHF radios and lights, uh, specialized tablet equipment, um, it grants me the ability to be in touch with, uh, local officials, um, police, fire, DPW, um, not only here locally in Maynard, but regionally, um, as well as, uh, at the state level through, uh, MEMA and, and folks of the like, um, and, uh, certainly, uh, several events over the years, uh, including the five major emergency declarations that I've managed, uh, it's clearly, um, having that vehicle has proven to be invaluable, and, um, you know, so that's where it's at. I provided the board with just some samples, uh, again, that, it's a common practice, um, it's something that, you know, that I would like, uh, that, you know, I haven't necessarily been happy with, um, you know, and that's what I'm looking for. Um, that's the justification that was provided, um, again, with the detail. Also have a national survey that was provided by the International City County Managers Association, it, um, just gives you the most recent 2015 data on, um, vehicle use that's provided, um, to my position, again, throughout the country, and is, you know, obviously isn't cumbersome, but it gives a snapshot of, uh, those folks that decided to respond and, and as an overall, um, and there's a lot of, you know, it's, it's not, uh, it's clearly not apples and apples, I mean, there's, there's variances there, but, um, certainly, uh, in Massachusetts, I think it, it speaks for itself, and, uh, that's, that's where we're at. Again, and the other issue, I mean, just the fact that the, uh, vehicle being parked at town hall, it, uh, causes problems during the winter, um, plowing months in addition to, uh, added vehicle repairs, um, that come up, too, to it.
Um, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, I take exception to one thing that Kevin said, um, namely that it was something that was taken away from him. No prior town administrator from Maynard has ever had a town vehicle. Kevin had it when he was assistant, actually, as, when he was first hired as the emergency management director, and then when he came, or whatever the title is, and then when he came on as assistant town administrator, I believe he continued to drive that vehicle. It was a contention issue, uh, issue of contention during his, uh, contract negotiation, and he specifically backed away from it as part of the signing of his contract, and I think for him, unfortunately, I, I would say, Kevin, for you to suggest that, um, that we had, you know, it was taken away from you arbitrarily, there was a lengthy discussion, and you've got to admit that, about that issue.
Yeah, sure.
And, uh, so, it was not arbitrarily taken away, it was taken away, there was a lengthy discussion, I can't have the same discussion again.
It's a predetermined decision.
I'm the only one that's here besides you that was involved in the discussion, but, um, there was a lot of reasons behind it, um, that were discussed at the time, and, you know, so my point is that, uh, to suggest that it was arbitrarily taken away is somewhat unfair. Uh, the other question I would have is how, what's the long-term implications of that? Does that go on to, relative to long-term for the town, for retirement benefits, et cetera, does that go on to your base, you know, for figuring out what you're entitled to in retirement, et cetera? I don't know the answer to that, but I, um, but it was something that was, that was also discussed. The, the issue was that it had never been, uh, it's basically a pay raise, and, and because you no longer have to pay for your own gas, you know, have to pay for your own insurance, that was all part of that discussion, and I, I think to renegotiate your contract now is somewhat, uh, backwards. When your contract comes up for renewal, that's when it would be discussed, in my eyes.
Jason, comments for you?
Um, I mean, I'm, I'm very familiar with this issue. I've had conversations with Kevin about this. I, I guess I'm surprised, and I'll bring up why I'm surprised by it, I guess in the chair, in the, uh, board member reports, but, um, I guess my question is, Kevin, you're just helping out, your contract expires-
Uh, September 30th of 16.
16, okay. Um, yeah, I, I guess I'm somewhat, I, I guess I'm curious as to why it came up now at the last minute on this meeting, after, uh, on an agenda that was posted, on a repost, um, and you said you sent a memo?
This was on the original agenda. This was never added in.
Yeah, I have the, I have the original agenda here, and it's on it.
Oh, correct, I, I stand corrected. Uh, I missed it the first time, so I guess I will take that back. Um, yeah, I, I guess I'm just curious, Chris, as to why we're bringing it up now, rather than potentially looking at, starting to discuss, uh, you know, uh, really what, what we want from Kevin going forward. We're almost a year out from a contract, uh, from the end of his contract, I would expect that we would actually start discussing whether or not we would renew the town administrator's contract, and this would be part of that.
In fact, I think there's a con, there's a terms within the contract that require us to be, to acknowledge that we intend to renew, I forget what the date is, but it's, uh, probably seven or six, six or seven months out, it might be six months, because that was, that was part of the negotiation, too, is to extend that period of time, uh, out.
No.
I think so.
Part of the negotiation was with regards to severance that was extended out from six months to nine months.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, okay, fair enough.
But the notice, yeah, the notice was, remained as six months at the end of the, uh, of the year. Um, yeah, I, you know, to, uh, selectman Gavin's point, he was the only one that was here, I don't know that that negotiation, um, and it's taped, and, uh, it certainly was done in public session, um, was, was done in good faith from the beginning, when 10 minutes into it, um, a member had suggested that we're not getting anywhere, we need a mediator, so in interest of moving things along and, and to carry it, to my bad, sure, um, but that, that's where that's coming. I'm looking at, um, opportunities that, you know, are around, and looking at this position as desirable, I want to be here in Maynard, and this is just a, an item that I've asked for, um, it's, it's, uh, been an issue personally for me for two years, um, and, you know, that's, that's the, uh, the genesis behind it was, I, I probably would have probably rethought it, um, but the desire, uh, is coming from the, uh, the fact that there's four new members here, um, the fact that the chair asked me about it, um, and that, that's where it's coming from.
But isn't it actually part of your contract?
What's that?
Isn't it written into the contract, the, the use of the vehicle, so, in, in effect, changing that is changing your contract?
Happens every day, David.
Well, I, I wasn't part of the original negotiation, the original change, or the, the timeframe when Kevin at one time was the, um, emergency managing director and had a vehicle as such, I, I wasn't part of that. My concern-
Just to be clear, I had the vehicle as the director of public.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so my, my question to Kevin, as we were literally sitting in his office, when we sit and we were discussing agendas and everything, his back is to the window, I'm looking out the window, and I see the same vehicle in the same spot that it's been in for six months, and I just said, well, whose car is that that never moves? And I, and so we said, well, that's my car, I said, well, don't you have a car out front? And so we got, we got into the discussion. My concern is really, um, insofar as this is a vehicle that is approved and supplied as the, um, a vehicle for the emergency management director, and as such is equipped with certain equipment and, and software and everything else that makes it, you know, part of that, part of that position which Kevin has, as, as well as the, um, town administrator. So my concern is that, you know, are we being short-sighted as a, as a community and as a board by saying, you know, you leave the car here and drive your personal vehicle home, but, you know, if something, something happens and, and he's in, you know, Franklin, and the vehicle is here, does that leave the town in a, in a, um, a position where we're more susceptible to have issues or, or, um, things that we're unable to deal with, whereas if the vehicle is, is at his house, he's, he has access to those special items that are in the car? But that was my concern. My concern is not that, you know, oh, Kevin doesn't get to drive his car, I could kill that with Kevin driving. My concern is, did it, is it a safety issue?
Here's the, and that was part of the discussion when we had it at the time, and the point was made that, you know, the, the majority of the emergencies, and I don't know if Kevin can point to any emergencies, he's mentioned five, that we've had, but most of them are weather events, and on all of those weather events that we've had, they have been, uh, we've had advance notice, huge advance notice that there is a weather event coming, and it was made clear to him at the time of his negotiations that if he needed to take the vehicle because of advanced notice storm, that he had the absolute right to do it, just notify the chairman. That, I believe, was the, uh, was the, the, the direction given at the time. And in the event, and this was the discussion, that we have, we have a chief of police, we have a fire chief, we have other people who are, uh, in town, that if there's an emergency in town, uh, that happens, there are other people here that we have on staff that can respond to those emergencies, and Kevin can get here when he can get here, and the point was made, if, if it's a situation where the roads are shut down to such an extent that Kevin needs a special vehicle to get here, it's going to be a hell of a trip, because Maynard's going to be in just as, as bad a condition as anything else, and we've got our DPW that's working on the roads, we've got, you know, whatever it happens to be. The point was that there was seemingly no need for that, and again, it's setting the precedent, because historically, Maynard has not had a town administrator with a vehicle. That's, that is the truth. Whether other towns have or not, that's part of the negotiation, it was negotiated as part of his contract, and I don't think it's proper for us to start the precedent of renegotiating, renegotiating contracts in the middle of the term, because what good is the initial negotiation?
I'm, I'm not seeking to renegotiate his contract, I'm, my concern is for, for safety and, and those other issues, I'm not concerned about renegotiating anyone's contract. My concern is that, that if we have an emergency management director, that, that the vehicle that we have assigned to that person is sitting in the parking lot when he needs it, whether or not, whether or not either of the two chiefs, fire, or police have something in their vehicle, if he's the contact for the state, and, and unexpected event takes place, where does that leave the town of Maynard? That's my concern. I, I understand weather forecasts, and we get, we get all this timeout, and, you know, this is New England, we've had days where we didn't think we were going to get any snow, we've got six or 10 inches, and, and crippled, crippled the area with the smaller storm than some of the larger ones, because people didn't expect it. My concern is some unexpected events that take place, and, and we're left in a, in a, in a, in a bad position, because we've, you know, we've decided that we shouldn't do this, or we shouldn't do that, that's my concern, and, uh, according to Kevin, the vehicle is already, you know, uh, budgeted for and accounted for, so it wouldn't be another additional financial hardship for the town, it's already, it's already into the, um, in there, and that's, that's my concern. My concern is, is the safety issue and the others, not, not whether or not Kevin has a vehicle to drive home, but that just, we are taking every precaution to make the town as safe as possible and as secure as possible going forward, that's my concern.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Want to weigh, want to weigh in?
I think it has less to do with, I mean, if you can sit there and tell me that the contract is not written in the contract, that we don't have to renegotiate that, then I don't even understand why we're having a con, why we're having a conversation about the last contract. To me, it's not an extra part of your salary or whatever, it's, you're the town administrator, you're the chief administrator of this town, and, you know, as a board member, I look to you to be able to make the decisions and be the one that's on-site when needed, and to have a vehicle that is set aside for the, for those reasons and you not be able to use it, I, I don't understand the logic there. Regardless of whether historically Maynard hasn't done that in the past, that's either hidden or there, this is 2015, it's a new board, it's, it's not the Maynard of the past, so let's put that away, let's make a decision now, if we can legally do this, or is the right thing to do, and we agree that's, that Kevin should have the vehicle, then we make a decision. I don't think we should go in the rearview and start talking about what happened in the past and bringing up people's contracts, that just distracts from what the real reason is here. He has a stated need here, and I, I support 100% what this thing says, not even just on the emergency portion of it, he's the town administrator, he needs to be able to have the vehicle that's afforded him, and I don't understand why, whether it's arbitrarily or not, we decided to not allow him to have that. That's my opinion.
Okay, Tim?
Yeah, I didn't know we had one, so, it's good to know, um, sounds like it's budgeted for going off. Terrence, why are we not using it? Why is it sitting there? Does the vehicle still work? I mean, how long has it been sitting there? But, David, I can sympathize with, with you that, saying you consider it a pay raise, uh, due to not paying for his own gas, but in this situation, it's no different than a police car, it's no different than a fire engine, they're driving it around for their job, for their purpose, they're not paying for their own gas either, so, I, I can't really stop-
It was all, it was, my point is, it was all part of his negotiation, and it was all negotiated along as a full package, this isn't just to talk about the car or whatever.
But if the car and all, and all the gadgets and everything else is, is budgeted for already, what does that have to do with his contract negotiation? If he has the right to use it?
Because the agreement was made at the time that Kevin sat here in front of the board of selectmen at the time he signed his contract, and he said that the car was not an issue, and it would not become an issue, and now it has, and that's backing out on the contract, and it's really unfair. To the town of Maynard, it's unfair.
I don't think it's unfair at all, I think he has the right to bring up anything before the board that he sees fit, and if we decide to put it on the agenda-
When it's contract negotiation time-
If we decide to put it on the agenda, we put it on the agenda, if we don't decide to put it on the agenda, we don't.
I put it on the agenda, because I have a concern about it. My concern is a concern I just stated, it was simply a, a safety, security, and emergency management director type of issue, that we have this vehicle that we are paying for, regardless of who drives it, or where it sits, or where it's parked, whether it's in the way for snowstorms or anything else, that has specialized equipment and, and needs that someone might need in a certain situation, and if that certain situation arises, and we leave ourselves short, what are we doing for the people of Maynard that we say we're trying to protect, okay? I, when I first came to town and I was on the finance committee, somebody said to me, we were talking about new police vehicles with Chief Cochran, and somebody said, well, why don't we just drive it till the wheels fall off? Well, do you want to be the one who's calling the ambulance when the wheels fall off and they can't come to your house? I don't want to be stuck in a situation where our emergency managing director does not have access to specific radios, software, and information that he may need, regardless of the weather and event or any other event, and he doesn't have it, because it's here, because I think we're being short-sighted, being that it's already budgeted for and paid for and accounted for.
Yeah.
I just don't see that, that it's a, that it's a contract issue, especially where I was the one that brought it up, not Kevin. This is my issue, not his necessarily, I just asked Kevin to tell me what's going on with this, and then that's where the discussion got to this point.
Let me, and this is unrelated to the town administrator's vehicle, Kevin, you know this isn't, it's, it's, the depart, the DPW director also came in here and negotiated and tried to get authority to have a vehicle that he could take home with him as well. So, so tomorrow, if he comes in and says, I need to be here in an emergency, and I have this and I have that, are we going to extend that authority as well? And part of the discussion there was how far he lived, and how much wear and tear would be, be getting put on the vehicle, and it was his choice to where he live, where he lives, et cetera. This was all negotiated through a series of discussions, Kevin knows that, and to now reverse on that, I think is unfair.
So, just to that point, David, uh, the town, the DPW director lives an hour and 10 minutes away, if he lived in Franklin, I don't even think we'd be having the conversation. The police chief is out of town, the, the fire chief is out of town, um, we're fortunate enough to have foremen who live in town, so nobody brings it up as an issue, um, but guess what? Guess how many municipal vehicles are in town that don't live, you know, that don't work in town? A lot of other communities, because it's, it's a need. The, the, you know, it's just, it's just a small thing, I think, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I think, I don't think that, that, the negotiation was fully in good faith, I take part in the interest of moving that forward, um, we are where we're at. Um, I, I think that, I, I think it's short-sighted that we're having this conversation about, about the vehicle, that, um, it, it should be, in my mind, a no-brainer, taking even the emergency management director function out of it, that is, that is just the, you know, that's just the, oh, yeah, okay, obviously, this is glaring, but just the fact that the, the chief municipal official of the town does not have a take-home vehicle i- is an issue. I never once, yeah, I signed the contract, but I never once verbally said it would not be an issue. be an issue. And second of all, I, I don't think that the DPW...
Usually when I sign contracts, I live up to the agreements that, that were made, especially when you negotiate.
Well, yeah, we were in different situations then.
Hmm? I don't think you should be getting angry about it.
I'm not, I'm not getting angry.
I think everybody's getting a little defensive here. David, you're coming across quite defensive because you were part of this. As a town, town resident at the time, I, I could, I could take action and say it, it seemed very arbitrary that you guys made this decision on it. I didn't think it was right. But I mean, what is that going to do for us, right? So either we're going to move forward with, we're going to vote on this, we're going to say, "What are we going to do about this?" Or we're going to keep arguing about who's right and whether someone's contract was up.
My commitment to the town is I relocated 40 minutes closer. Remind you when I had the vehicle for four years, I was driving as far as the DPW director.
I just wanted, I just wanted to be very clear because there seems to be some, some animosity building in the room. I suggested this. I suggested it get on the agenda. And I suggested, so Kevin is not renegotiating. I am saying as a person who's sitting here, elected by the people of Maynard to, to provide, you know, insight or, or, you know, some level of intelligence to the things that go on in town, that I don't see the, the, I don't see the sense in having this vehicle with the equipment and all the technology in it to benefit the town when there is no benefit to the town if the vehicle is sitting here. What Kevin negotiated, what Kevin talked about, it's immaterial to me. I'm more concerned with the fact that we have this asset and we have this piece of equipment that's built and designed for a specific purpose and we're not using it for that purpose. Why have the vehicle at all? We should sell it if we're not going to allow him to take it. Allow him to take it with him so that he has that equipment at his disposal when needed. Because it, because it doesn't make sense. And if there is a, a natural disaster or any other type of disaster and is, you know, if the chief is on vacation or if the chief of police or the fire chief or someone's not here, where do we go? Do we have to wait 40 minutes for Kevin to get here? And that's my point. I don't, I'm not concerned about Kevin's contract or the rest. My, my concern is the vehicle is here for a specific reason. We ought to have it used for that reason and provide that, that benefit to the town because we're paying for that benefit no matter what.
And, you know, I hear that, I understand that. I know it's not, I know it wasn't Kevin.
So let's not, let's not continue, let's not continue, let's not continue tonight or in the future to say, "Kevin, you shouldn't be renegotiating." He's not. I am.
Well, then, let me rephrase. The Board of Selectmen should not be renegotiating contracts.
I'm not renegotiating anyone's contract. All I'm saying is as the chairman...
Humans who are laid are being renegotiated.
I am, I'm not renegotiating anything. I am saying, suggesting to the board and to anyone else who wants to hear it, that this vehicle is a town vehicle and it's been purchased for this purpose, why is it sitting in the parking lot six, seven days a week? That, to me, is ridiculous when the person who should have it is here and, and that's the person should have it, the emergency management director. That's what it was purchased for?
He has access to it.
That was what it was outfitted for? But that's very short sighted if there's a problem when he can't get to that vehicle. The, the equipment does us no good if he's in Franklin or wherever else he may be and the vehicle is parked here. What good does that do the town of Maynard? Zero. If we want to sit here and say renegotiate, renegotiate, I renegotiated nothing. I've just suggested that to the town's benefit, this vehicle should be in the hands of the person that it was purchased and assigned to or, or assigned for. That's my whole point.
I get it.
It has nothing to do with Kevin renegotiating anything. Period. So let's not, and let's end that part of this discussion now. He's not renegotiating. I have suggested that we, as a town, assign this vehicle to him, allow him to take it with him to meet the town's needs in the event that emergency arises and it's not something that's forecasted and scheduled out in advance. So I'm going to make a motion. The motion is to allow Kevin Sweet the opportunity to use the vehicle that the town of Maynard has purchased and made provisions for to commute back and forth to home if that's what he sees fit to do as the emergency, emergency management director of the town of Maynard.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion before we vote?
Again, I'm, I'm glad this was brought up. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Kevin. It's, to me, this is a proactive measure. I mean, if I was near spot, I'd be thinking, "Hell, we went through that winter. I couldn't get anywhere. Your, your other car might not have been able to make it, this one might." I don't know, but seems like a proactive measure. Thank you for bringing it up.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Four people in favor, one opposed. So Kevin, you are now responsible for that vehicle and all the things that go with it. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the chairman's report. Now we have one issue, two issues. The water and sewer abatements that we moved off to tonight's, off of tonight's agenda. I would suggest that everybody on the board read them and look them over because there are nine requests. And in the nine requests, half of the cases seem to indicate that there had admitted leaks or running water issues in people's property. They left their water on for vacation, they had a running soup, a running toilet, you know, this, that, and the other. And in the, for whatever reason, the abatements came through, they're being approved due to what is quoted as computer glitches or calculation errors. And they're, and they're approving the abatements. I don't know how a computer glitch or a calculation is involved with that. I'd just like everyone to read them so that when we start to talk about them next week, we all know what they say because it's very inconsistent, at least what I read so far. So we'll, we'll take them up next week. But it just, I don't know, maybe you guys will agree with me or not, but it just seems like the reasons for the abatements being allowed is inconsistent at best in the nine that I saw. And I know of several people who had similar issues and theirs were refused and it just was refused out of hand. So I'd just like to get them looked at appropriately.
So is that a hearing, so to speak?
No. There's just nine abatements that we have to vote on.
Separately?
It's just a separate, nine separate items that will go through. They're in the packet this week. They'll probably be back in the packet for next week. And it's just, as you read through them, if you read the residents' requests and then you read the responses, you know, "I had a water leak and I admitted to you that I had a water leak and I left my faucet running for three days." How do you tell me it's a computer glitch? I left my faucet running. So they need to be, they need to be fixed. They're inconsistent. And the other thing is, what, we didn't decide anything about the, the geese on the golf course and the cap guns and all that. Are we okay with them using them again? Should we tell them? I mean...
That's the first I've heard of it.
It's a lot of conversation that I didn't feel was appropriate at the time, but it was just one complaint. When I called the golf course to find out their side of things, they said what they said here. They work, but they're not, you know, they don't solve the problem.
Nothing solves that problem.
And they acknowledged that they are loud and can be disruptive to the neighborhood. What Brad told me was the best solution is what Kevin said tonight, is getting a dog. And Patrick, the superintendent's dog that used to do an effective job the first couple of years that the course was managed by them, is now becoming friends with the geese. Has it gotten a little old and doesn't feel like hunting quite as much? But there are, there's legal issues about treating them a certain way. And our animal control officer has concerns about the crackers. We could allow it to continue, but I think it's something that we need to sort of manage a little bit.
What are her concerns?
The animal control officer said it could be considered animal cruelty. I didn't, rather than going down that road and trying to argue that back and forth, the golf course said, "Look, they're not that effective. We're willing to stop doing it."
I've always just thought it was a rod and gun club. I've never even noticed it.
I don't, I don't hear the rod and gun club in town. I'm not suggesting that it's not there, but the people that are abiding the golf course, one of the neighbors called and said, "It's disruptive. I can't use my outdoors as, as I want to because of how disruptive it is." I think it might have been a little exaggerated, but when the golf course, you know, I was willing to concede with them, maybe you do it every hour on the hour or, you know, some way so that it's not randomly disruptive. But they said, "Look, it's, it's not that beneficial. We're more than happy to try something else."
Okay. I just wasn't sure whether we made a decision.
It would be nice to know what responsibility. Are we breaking rules? Is it something, is it a standard use by other golf courses or other facilities? Is that just an animal control officer's opinion, et cetera, et cetera? I mean...
I think it's standard use. I mean, we've, we've, over my experience, we've, I mean, we had active landfills in other municipalities I've worked in and geese and everything, it was a constant issue. We've had to address it through and they oftentimes went to bangers. But you have to, I think you have to mix it up because they become complacent with whether it's just, just a dog or just bangers and things like that.
That's the whole point. I think you made, David's question about the fake dogs and the fake geese, they worked for a little while.
Yeah, they don't, yeah.
And walking right after them, they actually, in a, in a Wallace and Milton, they actually sit on, they sit on the plastic floor.
They do, yeah.
Does a goose actually sit up on them, they're standing on them.
After time, it...
They don't work too long.
Right.
Even, even the live dog, Patrick's dog, has gotten friends.
I mean, I think, I mean, it sounds like the, the geese issue is a real issue. That's the first I've really heard it at that level, that it's that bad. And, I mean, I think we, I think we can revisit the conversation with, with Sterling Golf and, you know...
Last couple of weeks, it's been really bad.
Come up, come up with something, whether they, they re-implement that in some fashion or some other method, but...
I'm not suggesting it's not a real issue. It does get worse this time of year because of the geese population. Early in season and they vacate, they come back August, September, then they, then they'll be gone again. But it's an issue when you want to golf, obviously. One of the sort of natural solutions is to build natural barriers around the ponds because the geese are reluctant to walk through tall grasses. But something like that's going to take one or two years to implement, you know, sort of naturally, putting in basically like a shrub border around a pond.
They don't seem to like the fountain either, actually.
No, no.
So maybe the fountain being down is a contributing factor.
So, all right. The only other issue I have is that the schools open this week and I just, from my perspective as sitting here, I just want to wish the students, faculty, and administration of the town a successful year for 2015 and 16 at the schools and hope everything goes well for this coming academic year, so. Other than that...
Back in session Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. I get all the junk, I live at my house already for my kid to go teach.
Yeah, my guys are tomorrow.
So let's go to the board reports. We're starting the opposite end today and start with you, Tim.
You always start with me.
I usually start with, with Jason.
I don't have anything other than, I'm glad that press release went out calling for members, people to join boards. Seemed to be somewhat effective already. Couple of people looking for openings. Been in touch with them. Other than that, keep going.
So I noticed the, along the lines of the school opening, that we're going to have to replace the crossing guard, the best crossing guard we have in the history of this town.
That's correct.
The guy who stays in front of the high school, keeps the traffic in line. He's grumpy, but he's effective, I'll tell you. So I did, I noticed that we have to, we have a, you know, an opening out there, right?
He was saying he had a...
Okay.
Really? I hope he gives me my jackets back. I gave him all those jackets with reflective tape on them.
So hopefully, if anybody knows anybody, I don't know if they've all saw the posting, but we are posting, I assume, it's still open right now. You got some candidates?
Today, that looks pretty promising.
All right, good. We need to fill that some void.
Yeah.
That's it.
David?
Thank you. I actually had similar comments relative to good luck to Maynard Schools and best wishes for a great schooling year, especially for the senior class. Zach, who does our, our taping for our meetings, good luck and have a great year. Just enjoy it and remember it. Kevin, can you give us an update on the industrial accident? Anything that you have on that?
I don't have much. I've heard some anecdotal conversation that it was actually the, and the chief may have heard more, but I've heard that it was the actual owner of the business and potentially he's okay in the sense of he, he's still alive and breathing, but my understanding is he likely will not be walking.
Ever?
So some, some serious spinal injuries that were pretty, pretty serious. So that was sort of kind of what we have on the periphery of notice.
Along those lines, then, I'm, thank you to our first responders. I'm sure the chief, your guys, and the fire department were down there. Sorry to hear that. I was hoping for better news. That's all.
Jason?
Actually, Kevin, I think you mentioned it earlier, but I guess for the business owners meeting?
Yes.
That those invitations had not gone out?
Yeah, we haven't formally sent those. They weren't out last week?
Oh, they didn't?
They did go out with them.
Either Wednesday or Thursday, I can't remember.
Okay. I can't remember what day I met with someone and they said, "I heard a rumor." There was a business owner who said, "I heard a rumor there's going to be a big meeting with Mill and Main, but nobody's seen anything yet. And I heard that it might be on the 10th." And I said, "Well, I would imagine you'd have gotten an invitation, but..."
I know specifically, I heard from Mary Brantley, she was well aware of it. I don't know about others. I, I think we, we tried to, I mean, I know at least the conversation was to get all of the downtown businesses and...
So we, yeah, I believe there were 123 property owners and/or business owners in what we might call the downtown overlay district. It's possible we missed a few, but we used the assessor's database to gather the data and then names that we had through the Maynard Business Alliance and so on for business owners that weren't property owners.
It's quite possible. They, if you talked to them over the weekend, they may not have actually received it.
I can't remember. It may have been last Monday, so they may have gone out right after that.
No, it was, it was late last week, either Wednesday night or Thursday night.
What do you mean, they didn't get picked up till Friday? If it was Thursday?
You know, it was Thursday night because I, I dropped them off the post office and I went to the school board meeting. So it was Thursday evening in the mailbox at the post office. They probably didn't get out locally till Saturday or Monday.
And that would be pretty much in line with when I talked to some folks. A quick follow-up on the, on the geese. The things they're firing off, when are they firing them off? Between what hours and how often?
It was random throughout the day when they had it, they had an issue and they would send one of the employees out there. And that was part of the complaint that I had received was that, you know, it wasn't just happening like, say, at 9:00 AM. They, they, the people complaining said, "If we knew it was going to happen like at 9:00 and at noon and at 4:00, we could live with it. But we'll be sitting out there, you know, doing whatever in our backyard and all of a sudden the, the guns go off." a sudden the guns go off. They were under the impression it was like a rifle or something.
Okay, so it was during, it was during the day.
We clarified all that, that what, what it was happening, but it was disruptive to their report.
Okay.
And the golf course agreed with that. It was, you know, they would do it when they had big congregation of geese and somebody available to run out there and do something about it.
I would have to point out that's not, we have a goose problem other places in town also. And, and one of the major issues that I see and I see continuously is people feeding them. Strongly recommend that we, if we don't already amend our regulations to prohibit the feeding of wild animals.
We do already have one.
It's, it's a huge water quality issue. You can't even walk across the parking lot at Mill and Maine with, it's just covered with.
Yeah, the.
I believe we said stuff is the appropriate term.
There's a local regulation, that's actually a health department regulation, that allows for fining of the health agent and/or police, but it, it can get tough.
I know it's not, I know it's not something that's easy to enforce.
We had a significant issue with them behind the, down on Powder Mill, specifically behind the housing authority property because it would happen, what would happen is they'd get a delivery of bread for residents that could take it, well, the residents were taking the bread and then feeding the geese. We went through that for quite a while and actually was able to enter into an intermunicipal sort of agreement with the state. They actually came out and, and netted them and took a large herd out of town. They have to actually relocate them to other farms is what they, you know, to farms is what they do. That got rid of a significant portion behind there. The signs, there's several, you'll notice if you go behind the housing authority property, there's several signs up that say do not feed the geese and they go on, they go ignored.
Yeah, they're signed. Again, I understand the issues with it, but that's a huge problem and we're going to start spending a ton of money on MS4 programs.
Yeah.
That are going to be generally because we're getting hits from fecal coliform.
So there is, there is an existing regulation that exists, as I said, so that we have an enforcement mechanism, but I'm not aware of any complaints that we're receiving about people feeding geese before this evening. I mean, in, in the limited hours the health agent has, they're not proactively looking for geese feeding, but I, nothing's come in that I'm aware of.
It was against the law. I saw a young child feeding the geese at the mill parking lot.